Here. Markwitz.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Sis.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repower for which it stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you all for joining us this evening and having you participate in our meetings. One of the advantages with the Zoom environment is we've been able to make our meetings even more transparent than ever. Just another procedural item, and we're going to bring this up at the next board meeting, but we realize that at the beginning of our agendas per policy, we do not have an area where we adopt our agenda. And the disadvantage with that is that that is an area where if a board member wanted to make a motion to add something to the agenda, they would have that opportunity. It's not clear where that would happen today in our agenda. So Kathleen has graciously offered to help us restructure our policy and agenda so that we can clarify what that process is. So we'll be putting that on study the next meeting and adopting it fairly quickly. Hopefully, that would be a best practice for our board meeting. So our first item, as always, is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Markwitz, board members. It's good to see you all this evening. I know that we have a long agenda this evening, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. I want to first thank our district staff, members of BVSA, and those Board of Education members that were able to make it yesterday to hear from our subcommittees as part of our consensus negotiations process. We invested another five and a half hours in listening and working together to solve some problems that certainly are more complicated than others. We are continuing to work on several issues. Some of those issues were reported in the Daily Camera. The meeting in its entirety is available on our website for those in the public that are interested. We're continuing to work on several issues that we, both the district and BVSA, have agreed to continue to address. And our next meeting is May 10th from 8:00 to noon. And so I wanted to just share that with everyone. I want to thank Don Stenstedt and the staff at Fairview High School for hosting us for a school visit. We visited on April 23rd. Thanks to Kathy, Kitty, and Lisa, who were able to take time out of their schedules and make that visit. Always great to be in our schools and see some of the wonderful things that were happening. We got a chance to interact with teachers, with students, with administrators, and it just was a really great visit. So thank you to the team at Fairview. And then finally, on April 15th, board members, I had the opportunity to be invited to the Parent of Color Council. Parent of Color Council is a group that has been facilitated by one of our amazing parents, Jamila Richmond, and Jamila is going to be serving, I believe, on our DAC exec board next year. And I spent about 90 minutes listening to parents share some of their stories and their experiences, both in our schools and in our community. It reaffirms to me that there's work that needs to be done in our schools that is aligned to our strategic plan about being culturally responsive, that we constantly and continuously need to be reviewing policies, practices, on making sure that all of our families and all of our kids feel welcome and safe. As we talked a little bit about some of those strategic plan metrics in our work session, I do believe that that's going to help us with some of the transparency on some of these issues. But I just wanted to thank the Parents of Color Council for inviting me, sharing their stories with me, and the support that they provided to our district as we work on some of these difficult issues. And so that's all I have for my comments this evening.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Anderson? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is public participation. The Board of Education acknowledges that public hearing... Oh, are we doing a COVID update?
I'm so sorry. Yes, we are doing a COVID update. At this point, I am, let's see, who are we pulling up to give a quick COVID update?
Stephanie Farren will be kicking us off.
Wonderful, thank you, Rob. So Stephanie Farren will be kicking us off with this evening's COVID update. I apologize, President Markwitz, for the confusion there.
Thanks, Dr. Anderson. This is Stephanie, and good evening, President Markwitz and board members. I'm going to start the COVID update tonight with a quick synopsis of how we're doing on our vaccinations. First of all, we are continuing to provide vaccination opportunities for our staff through Boulder Community Health. Our insurance providers are actually reporting that between 70% to 85% of our insured staff are fully vaccinated. And we've been collecting documentation of that vaccination at schools and departments. And right now, we have about 60% of that documentation for all of our school staff on hand. Schools and departments are still collecting this, so we anticipate that that number will increase. But you can definitely see how that's benefited us through the number of quarantined staff that we actually, or a number of staff that we aren't quarantining now because they are fully vaccinated. And again, to remind everybody that "fully vaccinated" is somebody who is greater than 14 days after either a two-course vaccination or a one-dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And our staff vaccinations have, or our staff quarantines have dropped dramatically since our vaccination, so that's wonderful news. Next, I'll talk a little bit about our community update on vaccinations. We're continuing to work with our local public health partners. And I'll mention just a couple of one-time opportunities that are going to be happening here in our community. First of all, Boulder County Public Health hosts a clinic on Tuesday and Thursday at the Boulder County Fairgrounds, so the 27th and 29th. That is Moderna vaccine, I believe, and that is open to anybody. And then Broomfield Public Health, in partnership with King Supers, is going to have a large-scale vaccination clinic at the First Bank Center on Thursday, the 29th. And this is also open to all BVSD families and students 16 and older. They have Pfizer vaccine at that clinic, and so 16-year-olds can get vaccinated there with consent from their parents. Appointments opened for that clinic yesterday at noon time. And then we're really excited about the clinic that's going to be occurring on May 9th at And divine in Lafayette. That's a partnership between the Latino Chamber of Commerce and CDPHE's Vaccine Equity Task Force. And that will be held, like I mentioned, at And divine, and they will also have Pfizer vaccine. So families with students of 16 and above can get vaccinated there. And then ongoing, we have our work with Boulder Community Health that's ongoing. They're working with us to streamline some of the signup options for BVSD students and their families through the MyBCH portal and their call-in center. And their call-in center can also assist Spanish-speaking families. They have, or have been getting a more regular allocation of Pfizer vaccine, and so they're able to provide 16 and older vaccinations at their site also, and that's Monday through Friday. And then, of course, our local providers, Safeway, King Supers, Walgreens, also have vaccines. And the state community clinics, which are held at the Ranch in Larimer County and at the Ball Center in Denver, are now accepting walk-ins for vaccines. So that's another really great resource for our families. And there is also access to free transportation to those vaccinations through, I believe it's the Mile High United Way. You can access that through 211.org. Finally, we've been discussing, kind of ongoing, with our community partners and internally, how we can assist families in the community to get vaccines and to sign up for these vaccines. A lot of times, signing up is quite cumbersome. So we've realized that, you know, to help prevent that obstacle, we have decided to have vaccine navigators that will be helping at vaccine registration help centers during food distribution. We're going to have these bilingual navigators at Emerald Sanchez and Crestview, and they will be able to access all the main vaccination sites for our local providers, assist families to get appointments, and they'll also have access to transportation assistance if families need it. We will continue to work with Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield and Boulder Community Health to look at how we can maximize community resources and discuss plans for any kind of additional outreach as vaccine becomes available for our 12 and older population. And of course, we're hoping to see that sometime in May, maybe late May. And I believe now I'm going to turn this over to Rob Price to talk a little bit about what next school year might look like.
Stephanie, thank you. We continue, our team continues to meet with Broomfield Public Health and Boulder County Health on a weekly basis. Right now, what we do know is we do know that we're planning for five days a week in the fall, so rest assured there, we're going to do everything we can to make it as normal as possible. What we don't know yet are what are the health precautions that will be in place. So we are making some assumptions at this time, but I think it's safe to say those will change a few times before August. So we will continue to report back to the board on what the health precautions will be when we have that information from CDPHE and the health departments. As Stephanie just commented, the Pfizer vaccine, we do believe, will be available in the end of May. So we will continue to work with the health departments and determine what supports we can provide our families to help those that want the vaccination. So with that, next slide. We are working to finish this year strong. I will say, a lot of work has went into place in graduations. If you click on the link there, when you have time, you'll see all the dates and times of all our graduations. All of our schools will be holding their graduations at Rec Field, with the exception of Justice High that will hold theirs at Broomfield, and New Vista will be holding their graduation at Shu'takuah. So great collaboration with public health departments to make this happen and our school leaders and district leaders. Some of the health precautions that will be in place, we'll still be encouraging masking when outdoors, we'll have hand sanitizer, we'll look at the social distancing that were proposed, and continue to have in and out, different exits, different entries, et cetera. This is the plan that we put together and has been reviewed by Boulder County Public Health. You'll see, we can fit our largest graduating class, Fairview and Boulder High, in one setting, so we'll be able to get about 530 students in six-foot social distancing cells. And then they'll be able to have at least four guests per graduate, so up to about 2,700 people in these cohorts of 175. So again, these plans have been reviewed by the health departments, and this is what we're proceeding with. And this is all in alignment with the guidance that will be in place starting May 16th. So when you look at these and you try to compare today's guidance, this does not match up. So this is all assuming we are in level clear and able to move forward with, and again, everybody is comfortable with that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin Fernandez, who will talk about summer school.
Good evening. So as a component of our COVID catch-up plan, summer learning this year is designed to address both the academic but also the social-emotional needs of students who either entered the pandemic behind and continue to need support, or who fell behind during remote learning. I am extremely pleased to share that all of the summer learning opportunities that I am about to describe will be offered cost-free to every one of our families. So first, our summer learning for rising first through ninth graders is designed to be delivered in a whole-group setting, a targeted small-group setting, and with individual support in both literacy and math, with also an inclusion of social-emotional learning support with staff every week. There are bilingual opportunities for students who attend our bilingual schools, who choose to attend bilingual summer learning, and there is a virtual option for families who prefer that their students attend virtually instead of in-person. And we do have a small number of families who have registered for this option. So our team has worked tirelessly over the past several months, both with schools but also by contacting families individually. And so as a result, I'm pleased to say that we have a substantial increase of registrations for summer learning over previous years. So as of today, we have nearly 100, I mean, 1,300 students in this Rising First Through Ninth Grade program registered. So additional supports that these students will receive during this program include cost-free breakfast and lunch, cost-free aftercare for families who desire a full-day experience for kids. This will occur at our elementary and K-8 locations. In addition, busing is available for students who live outside of the walking boundaries, and there is extrabehavioral and social-emotional learning support with staff available at our sites. Moving on to high school summer learning, and again, these opportunities are provided cost-free for our families. So students who have incurred either incomplete grades or F grades that need to be addressed during the summer can do so through accelerated content study and support, and which, and SEL support will also be provided for these students if needed at our sites. Rising programs. Every one of our comprehensive high schools has the ability to develop a Rising program for incoming ninth graders, the purpose of which is to help ninth graders transition successfully from middle school to high school, to help them not only feel welcome on campus but to help address any needs proactively that they would have that could be barriers to success in beginning the school year successfully. Also, as a continuation of the COVID catch-up plan, students can continue to engage in SAT preparation this summer. And this not only supports their knowledge and skill development in preparation for taking the SAT, but it is really also a comprehension, a comprehensive immersion into high school content standards, which will help support them in courses that they will take next year and beyond. Finally, we will be offering for any and every BVSD family to access via the BVSD website, self-paced summer academic activities. We know that many of our families, whose students may not be attending summer learning, may still want to support their students academically, who are either in elementary or middle school. And so our content teams have been working furiously to develop both academic support activities but also enrichment opportunities in all content areas. In addition, videos are currently being developed in both English and Spanish to support the English and Spanish opportunities in content areas that will be a support for parents to know both how to access these activities but also how to use them to support their students. And so we are very excited to be able to extend our COVID catch-up plan through the summer to support a very large number of students. And at this point, I am going to pass it off to Tiffany Leichuk, who is going to talk about project-based learning within the context of our COVID catch-up plan.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson, President Markwitz, and board members. I'm really excited to be here this evening with you to share some information and updates, and also some student work, that's the part that I'm most excited about, as part of our PBL Perspectives Project. So you may remember this project stemmed from a recommendation by the Phase Two Plus Working Advisory Groups that were started by Dr. Sam Mesa this fall. And the goal of those groups with project-based learning was to have an opportunity that could be community-wide and implemented either at home with caregivers or in classrooms at schools with teachers. The group felt that this would give students the ability to tell their stories and share their experiences from 2020, whether it's about being a child living during a global pandemic, racial injustice, political events, wildfires, or just about anything else that has impacted them over the last year. In addition, it would also give students the opportunities to be creators of primary source documents for future generations who will undoubtedly study this strange time in history. The PBL Perspectives Project leverages both academic content and also authentic, relevant events from students' lives over this last year to really engage them in deeper learning. This project was also a unique opportunity for us to integrate our newly-formed BVSD essential skills, for example, awareness, empathy, and global citizenship, to name a few, into learning experiences. So really excited about the positive feedback also that we've been receiving from our community. The example on the screen there is a letter to the editor of the Daily Camera, supporting and sharing the excitement that they had around this work that we're doing with our students. So to kick us off this evening, next slide, please, Randy. We're going to start with an example from Charlie Nelson, and she's a fifth grader at Monarch K-8. The project that she completed was designed by Ally Graham and Cliff Roberts, who are also at Monarch K-8. Cliff is actually her teacher. And to set up this clip that we're going to share as a part of her project, the students in this class were asked to talk about their experience as a student in the last year, and then also to choose an event from the last year to give their perspective on. They were then asked to compare their perspective to that event to that of someone else. So what we're going to see here is a clip where Charlie shares her perspective on her chosen event of 2020.
One of the biggest reasons I'm talking about BLM is my mom. She stood up for tons of kids and parents of color in the Boulder Valley School District. I didn't really get on that person because I've never seen any person get bullied or mistreated at my school. Anyway, she walked all around Boulder in front of the crowd because she knew that this is the right thing, and so did I. But I thought my mom was going to get hurt or shot like other people of color in some way for protesting. That's why I got mad at her because I wasn't there to make sure everything was okay. Her protesting showed me that I didn't have to be there because she had a bunch of people by her side. It shows me if my mom can stand up to tons of people in Colorado, I realize that I can do the same thing in life at one point.
That's quite an example for us to kick off with. Just a little bit more background information on this project before we get into seeing a few more student samples. A key work in developing this PBL experience for students was engaging a teacher design team. So involving our teachers in the district and doing the unit design and preparation for this was a really important step. That teacher design team was made up of eight teachers ranging from first grade up to high school, so we had a wide range of grade levels and content areas to help us with that project. The driving question that sort of frames the learning for the projects K through 12 that this team designed was, in what ways do people experience the same event differently, and what does this teach us? So that team of teachers took on the challenge of designing example units that could be used for different content areas and grade levels. And then those samples of student projects that you'll see this evening, including that great one from Charlie, are from these classrooms of the teachers that were on the design team. So in addition to those teacher-designed sample units, we also created a more general project toolkit that could be used by educators and/or caregivers for students who wanted to create the, or do a project at home. One more design element that's really important in project-based learning is the public product part, and that's a really engaging piece for students to be able to share their work in a public venue. So so far, we have two public displays of student learning planned. One of those is a virtual BVSD museum, where projects that are created between now and May 14th are being submitted, and we'll organize those projects and display them in a virtual museum for students. And the second is, like, fingers crossed things keep going well, would be an in-person exhibition of learning sometime next fall for students whose projects are better suited for a live face-to-face audience. Next slide, please, Randy. All right, so we're going to get back to the good stuff, to the kids here. So the primary grades teacher design team was made up of three teachers, Sarah Nelson from University Hill, Francesca Gettleman from Eldorado K-8, and Lauren Rubini from Whittier. And this group of teachers took a really unique approach to their design. They each took a content area and then designed a project strand for that. So we have a strand for literacy, one for science, and one for math within this unit. Those strands can be either taught individually or together as a bigger, more integrated project. So this first example that we'll see of a primary grades project is from the literacy strand. So this strand includes the Celebrating Diversity Set from the IRA materials in our Fountas and Pennell, materials that we have in our monolingual schools, and also from Ready Gen Unit 4, which is Becoming a Good Citizen, that we have in our bilingual schools. So these books were used as a springboard to help students learn how to describe perspectives in order to then give them the opportunity to describe their own perspectives and feelings about 2020 in narrative writing. So let's take a listen to Aria from Francesca Gettleman's class to hear her perspective on 2020. Clip, please, Randy.
When I first got on line, it wasn't the same. The room wasn't the same. I wanted, I want to have fun. I hate COVID. It's weird. It should be gone soon. COVID is not fun at all.
I think we can all agree with Aria that COVID is not fun at all. Our next clip is another example, this one from a second-grade classroom, Sarah Nelson's class at University Hill. So this is an example from the science strand and the literacy projects. And in the science strand, students were asked to examine, in this case for second grade, a current event, which was the reintroduction of wolves. That was an important piece of legislation in Colorado in 2020. And then study different perspectives on that event and how that made them feel. Finally, they tied into the literacy strand and asked students to talk about something from their life in 2020 that they also wanted to share about. So we're going to hear here from Sophia next. And Sophia's teacher wanted us to know that she is a great example of a newcomer who is able to really express her understanding of different perspectives using academic language in simple sentences. Clip, Randy.
This year, voters approved Proposition 114 to reintroduce wolves into Colorado. There are different perspectives about this. One is that they hate it. Two, I'm scared. Another, uh, uh, biologists. The world gets deeper and gets worse.
Love that. So we'll take a look here. These are a couple of other projects from the intermediate elementary unit plan, similar in format to what Charlie Nelson's did that we saw earlier. So Charlotte, the project on the left, the kid's perspective from 2020, my homeschooling experience, is from Jerry Richardson's fourth-grade class at Eldorado. And Mia on the right is from Monarch K-8, and she is from Ally Graham's class, one of our teacher designers. And they do a really great job of showcasing both their narrative, narrative writing skills and also the essential skills of self-awareness in their podcasts, really talking a lot about what it was like from their perspective to experience 2020. We don't have the time to show both of these now, but they are linked in the images on the slide, and would recommend that you go back and have a chance to check them out later. They're really great. For the secondary perspective and projects, we have a couple of middle-school ones that are available. We actually had two middle-school teachers to help design these projects. Sophie Ramus from Centennial Middle School designed a math project, kind of a STEM project. And her project includes sixth-grade-level standards for data and also an overarching project to research and inform an audience of an event or topic from 2020. So the end goal of Sophie's unit for math was to ask students to use data displays and measures of central analysis, which sounds very complex, to come to conclusions about the event that they chose to research and display those in a graphic and written form. The other middle-school project we had was an eighth-grade language arts project created by Katie Miles from Centennial Middle School as well. And she designed a unit that helps students to better understand how information literacy can help us to better understand others. The key language arts skills of research and communication were targeted in her project, along with the BVSD essential skill of cognitive empathy. It's really amazing to see the tools that these students created to help bring awareness to others about the issues surrounding social media consumption in our day and age. These are just a few examples of some of her students' work. A podcast on filter bubbles and echo chambers that was created by Julia Will and Severin. An argumentative essay about how the pandemic has disproportionately affected women by Megan. The creation of an infographic on disinformation by Malia, Junie, and Alondra, as well as an infographic on how to read laterally to help understand media bias created by Cora, Connor, and George. Again, these products are all linked in the slides to these images, so if you'd like to take a more in-depth look at them later, they're available there for you. All right. The final example, and the one, this one is so inventive and creative. The final example, and the one, this one is so inventive and creative, I can't wait to share this one with you guys. We'll share tonight was designed by Michael Bautista, and he is a construction teacher at Boulder High School, or at Boulder Tech, sorry, construction teacher at Boulder Tech. His projects ask students to design a habitat for space that also takes into consideration isolation units in case of a quarantine. The students first had to analyze the environment for the place that they would choose. So the student in this example, her name is Grace Hurst, chose the moon, so she was looking at lunar habitats. They then had to do research about the atmosphere, gravity, radiation, soil properties, and natural resources available in that habitat, and then used it to choose the best location on that planet or star for their habitat. In this case, the lunar south pole. South pole, yes. Based on their research, next, they had to justify their choices of construction and building materials to create a living space for humans. And in connection to 2020, part of their design had to include a space for quarantine that meant ventilation requirements necessary to contain an airborne illness. So although the lead content of this project was construction, it integrated knowledge of biology, epidemiology, language arts, physics, math, geology, and astronomy, along with the BVSD essential skills of systems thinking and sustainability, which are part of our global citizenship skill. So there's lots more information and also supports for anyone who might like to complete the project between now and mid-May at bvsd.org/pbl2020. And I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to share this work with you all this evening. It's really been a highlight of my year, having the chance to work with these teacher teams and watch the amazing things that our students are producing. It's been really inspiring, and I can't wait to see what happens with our public displays next fall and the summer. Thank you.
I believe next, we're going to hear from our Boulder County and public, and Brumfield Public Health officials.
I would like to just take a couple of minutes to highlight a few bits of data and slides that I think are particularly pertinent for this group. In general, we are seeing some increasing rates in some ages of concern. And let me just share my slides real quick.
Not yet, Lexi, but I did want to also introduce you to our new director over at Boulder County Public Health. Welcome.
Thank you, yes, I'm Lexi Nolan. And here we go. So I'm the acting director at Boulder County Public Health, and we have our full complement of team this evening for additional questions. I will be quick, though. I thought the presentation given a little earlier was excellent and gave you a lot of the critical information that you definitely need. So we are at incidence.
Just, you know, we don't, we don't actually see your slide at this point still.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you knew.
No, I appreciate that. There we go. How about now?
Perfect.
Great, thank you. Okay, so our incidence level is at 151, which is up a bit from 141 per 100,000 last week. We are still in yellow. And, sorry, just, we, our positivity rate is at 4.4%, which is the same as last week, which is level blue. And we are now at 11 days of decreasing in stable hospitalizations, which has improved from last week. I do want to skip forward a little bit to really highlight this slide, which is a breakout of our different ages. What we're really seeing is that, that I'm concerned about and that I know you all will be watching carefully, is this orange line right here, which is our 10 to 17-year-olds. So the number of cases is not quite as high as it was a couple of weeks ago, but it has been coming down, and now it's increasing again.
Just to interrupt, Randy, is there any way so that we could see the right-hand side of the slide, that she's got her pointer? Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Not at all. I'm glad you interrupted. So what I'm, what I was saying is that I'm a little concerned about this orange line, which is our 10 to 17-year-olds. You can see that it spiked a couple of weeks ago, and then it came down, and now we're back up again, and that's following a pattern among younger populations more generally, particularly 18 to 22, we had a spike, it was back up now, as well as our 22 to 34-year-olds. I do want to also highlight that our vaccinations are improving nicely. We continue to see uptake of vaccinations. It's not quite as fast as it was previously, but Boulder County is still getting an uptake of vaccinations at a higher rate than a lot of counties around us in Colorado and certainly in the country. What's really reassuring to see is that the number, the percent of folks above 30 is really around two-thirds, it's over two-thirds of the population, has been vaccinated with at least one vaccine, one dose over 30. We're really working on this 20 to 30-year-old population right now, and of course, this 10 to 19 is never going to be 100% right now because 10 to 19-year-olds aren't all eligible. Only 16 to 19-year-olds are eligible. This is the other slide that I wanted to show, which shows clearly that we do still have some work to do, particularly within the BIPOC population. We're looking still at about 35,000 folks who are unvaccinated. I just do, I do want to point out that this number is a combination of these top numbers. It's not in addition to them. And so we really are continuing to focus at the Public Health Department on making sure that our Latinx population in particular has extra outreach and working with the schools to make sure that Latinx families are getting that messaging. And thank you all so for doing an amazing partnership with our teams. It's greatly appreciated. Finally, what I really want to mention to you is that we're starting to see some decreases in transmission control, and this is a combination of different ways that the virus is prevented from spreading. And our transmission control is down around 60% right now, which is as low as it's been over the course of the pandemic. And what it really tells us is that people aren't masking as much, they're not social distancing as much. We need them to continue to get tested, especially younger populations, where we're seeing those higher numbers of cases, but they tend to get tested less frequently than older populations. And really encourage people to follow, to keep following quarantine guidelines. Our emerging concerns are that the positivity rate, especially for youth, may not be as accurate as we'd like because we may be missing cases that aren't getting tested. We are, we continue to be concerned about variants, especially because they both increase transmission and they can increase disease severity. And we are continuing to see in the emergency, emerging science that COVID does have an impact on kids in terms of long-haul syndrome and neurological impacts. We are definitely seeing lower hospitalizations in Boulder County, but state numbers are going up. What is reassuring is that folks who are being hospitalized, especially if they've been vaccinated, are not seeing significant disease severity. We're not seeing a lot of hospitalized vaccinated folks. What we are seeing is younger people going into hospital with more disease severity than we've seen previously due to the variants. We, this is not an updated slide. We heard today that there's been a second death in April in Boulder County. So we're disappointed about that. It's unfortunate, and we'll continue to watch those numbers. So just to wrap up, we really look forward to continuing to work with BVSD on, on making sure that the clinics and the vaccination appointments are available for our 16, 17-year-olds now, for the groups that we are working with in terms of really being able to offer those vaccines to 12 to 15 when those age groups become available and supporting parents. But we really need folks to encourage everyone to get vaccinated, to keep testing, especially for youth, to keep masking if indoors or if someone's not vaccinated, and really to appeal to parents to help us protect children and youth, protect during out-of-school activities, and really follow the guidelines and cooperate with the public health officials when cases do occur or when you suspect that your child might have had an exposure, so that we can really open up more in May with Level Clear and have a great summer together.
I'll just add a few things. I'm Chris Urbina, I'm the medical officer of both Boulder and Brumfield, and tonight I'm representing Brumfield, but I'll take questions from both Brumfield and Boulder. The, just very similarly, with the case incidence rate is 156 per 100,000 in Brumfield, we have the same rise in cases in the 0 to 29. Over half of our new cases are in that population. Part of that, obviously, is due to that population still not be fully vaccinated. I think when you look at the back, the hospitalizations and you look at no cases, they're primarily in folks that haven't been vaccinated. So there's a very positive message there, that if you get vaccinated, you can not only reduce your chances of getting sick, but being hospitalized and having long-term, long-hauler syndrome, which Lexi alluded to. We're still very concerned about the high positivity rate. I do, I do think there's a trend to not get tested and to largely ignore symptoms. And I understand completely, while people are willing to and are excited about opening up more and we're going out more outside, and I think I would echo many of the comments that Lexi mentioned, is that it's still not too late to get vaccinated. It's still important to wear your mask, physical distancing, avoiding large crowds, and washing your hands. The final thing I wanted to say is that we're still seeing transmission outside of schools, transmission in schools, even though there are significant numbers of people that are quarantined. We're still seeing some of those, the transmission happening in households as well as extracurricular activities. And I think that's true both of Brumfield and Boulder. So I think we can pay attention. Schools have done an excellent job. I think, Dr. Anderson, your team, the board needs to know that your team has been excellent and working tightly with us to develop these guidelines, as well as with Stephanie and our, and our team of Sota and Taylor, really working together to try to keep our kids safer, not in, not only in schools, but in our community. And so I'm going to just stop there for the Brumfield update and see if there are any questions for any of our team. And I know Sota and Taylor are there to answer real specific details, and of course, Lexi and I will take questions from you as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Kathy?
Can we go back on the slide? There was a graph that I don't remember seeing before, and it was on the transmission rate or something, and I wasn't sure what goes into calculating that? And if we could just look at it again really quickly? I don't know if anyone can go back to it. Is it too hard? So, do you know which slide I'm talking about?
I do. Let me just figure out where it is.
That one, the transmission, yeah. So how do, thank you. What goes into measuring that?
Right, so that's a combination of factors. Chris, I don't know if you want to answer this one, or I can?
Sure, I'm happy to, let's do it, tag-team, Lexi. So why don't you start, and then I'll add if, I'm sure you've got it, so.
So it's a combination of measures. It includes observed masking, observed social distancing, and a combination of practices. Do you know the other specific observations that go into it, Chris?
Those are the primary two, Lexi. Those are masking and physical distancing are the primary variables. But again, it's, it's, some of it's observed and some of it's modeling. So we're seeing this trend, and as you can see, early on in March, when we had a significant number of cases, people were paying attention, we had over 80% transmission control. And as you see, that number's starting to go down, that's what we're really concerned about, is that masking and physical distancing primarily. Does that help?
Yeah, thanks. Rob, do we know, have we increased the percentage of surveillance testing that we've been trying to do in schools? I know we were trying to get that number up a little bit.
Rob Price is approaching the microphone to give us the answer to that.
And give you the answer. We're growing by about 150 students a week, so we currently have about 5,700 students enrolled into the program. But we also lose a few each week, but on average, we're gaining about 150.
So what percentage does that take us up to roughly? Because weren't we trying to get to like 40% or something?
5,700 divided by, what, 23,000 students in person, I believe, somewhere right around there. So not close to the 40% we were hoping for.
About a little over 20%.
So we're kind of hanging in at the 20s. Are we getting resistance, or are people just not paying attention to it? I mean...
I don't have an answer to that, Kathy. I really don't know the answer. We're getting the message out, I do know that. We're just not getting people to enroll for it.
Those were the questions I had, thanks.
Richard?
I have a couple of questions, but not for the COVID update. I want to ask about the summer program update. Can I do that? So this, this, when you put up the slide on the, on the summer options, you talked about the bilingual options. And I believe I heard you say that the bilingual options are for kids that are enrolled in bilingual schools?
Yes, that's a great question. So our students who are at bilingual schools and currently receiving their instruction bilingually have the option of enrolling in bilingual summer school. And that is going to be at both Pioneer and at Columbine.
So if there are kids that are in other elementary schools but do need bilingual options, can they go there?
We will be happy to work with individual families who would like that to be an option for their family.
And then my second question on that is, how are they getting the word on the summer options?
Ooh, that's a great question. Because we have been working since January with our schools, with our school leaders, with our community liaisons, with our staff, both in English and Spanish, with our summer learning staff, and our summer learning staff and our community liaisons have been contacting families individually. So it really is a team effort, working with the schools who know these students the very best of anybody, right? But also making sure that we have bilingual staff who are able to contact them individually and really explain what summer learning is and what all of the components are, and to help address any barriers that each family might have.
So if there's a family or two or three or four that did not get the information, how do we guide them to the right people?
Well, they are welcome to reach out to anyone at their school. They are also very welcome to call our family hotline, or they can contact me. Anybody can reach out to any one of us, and we will put them in contact with the right people.
So let's say, for example, there are a couple of kids at Eisenhower Elementary School that may need bilingual options, but they didn't get the word, or, I mean, how are those families going to get the word?
So that, that is coming directly from their school. They should have been informed both by their teachers or by their, their administrators or through flyers. We also did a big push-out of, of text communication to all of our families that we have identified as needing support through our summer learning program. So if there are any families at this point who aren't aware, please feel free to direct them either to me or to their schools, and we will work with them.
Thanks, Robyn.
Of course.
I had a quick question for either Stephanie Farren or Rob Price. You're talking about a vaccine availability for the 12 to 15 in May, end of May. Where are you getting that date? What, so where is that discussion coming from?
You know, Dr. Urbina might be best to address that if he's still on.
Yes, of course, Rob. I'll try to tackle that. I'll try to tackle that. The, the current rumor, and this is not fact, is based in fact yet, is over the next several weeks, the clinical trials have been going on for the 12 to 15-year-old group, and they, they estimate in the next several weeks, they'll be submitting it to the FDA for approval or review of the data. So I think we're all anticipating in May likely, or maybe even June, that'll be approved, and we can start vaccinating that. That's the challenge. You know, these things are done when they're ready. Obviously, they don't want to present data that's not robust, so that they'd miss this opportunity to get an EUA approval for it. So I anticipate that more news in May and likely in the summer, early summer.
Okay, thank you. That's, I know a lot of parents are anxious for that opportunity. Kathy?
Is there an update, Dr. Urbina, on when the EUA will turn into, he's still talking, and we can't hear anything? Okay.
No, I'm not talking. I don't know why the recording is delayed.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if there was any update on the timing on changing the vaccine from an emergency use authorization to one that was fully accepted.
That's a great question. And the challenge is, is that generally, the, the timing of the phase four clinical trials is one to two years. So I think we're, we're going to see at least another year before we have the likelihood of having that full approval. So I'd, I'd be patient on this one. You know, the, I think the, the emphasis is now getting people vaccinated while we continue to watch the hundreds of millions of people that have been vaccinated, watching them very closely, both for effectiveness as well as safety. The, you didn't ask this, but the Janssen severe complications related to blood clotting was picked up by our Vaccine Advisory, Adverse Events Reporting System called VAERS. And that's, to me, re, very reassuring that we picked up a very small number of people who had this very severe, but, but very rare condition. And so that's part of the issue around the final approval, is making sure that this is safe, and we watch these for a significant period of time. So I, generally, it takes a year or two to get that full approval to be happening.
Then just one more quick question. We had an update on graduation, but are we, can we get an update on what we think is best behavior with proms coming up? Do we? That's like realist...
Is the pandemic best behavior, or just prom regulations in general? Just for clarity? I'm sorry, Rob.
We have a lot of guidance for proms from CDPHD, Kathy, that we'll have to follow. It limits groups the size of 10, so cohorts of 10 people, social distancing, of course. They're recommending that food not be present, dancing, still the six feet in between people dancing, so they're recommending line dancing, all kinds of stuff. So I will say, schools have put together some phenomenal plans. I mean, they're holding at places, I know the aquarium's holding a couple of our proms. So a lot of thought, a lot of patience has went into this from our schools, because our schools have developed these plans in alignment with the guidance that's been given. So, but there's, there's a lot to go through and think about and be approved by us before they're put in place.
And I know we just, we'll get the guidance out, but I get nervous about what I see with these numbers, and I think schools are doing what they can. We also need to talk to our parents about what happens, they show up on a bus before prom, and then they go socially distanced, and then they go to after prom. Just kind of some guidance for our, our families as to what best practices would be to keep our kids safe.
I believe the timing of these events is also something that, that schools have taken into consideration, either a couple weeks before graduation or right before graduation. And most of our schools are only, they're only holding senior proms. And so to the extent that, that these things will impact the other students in our high schools, I think that, or, or impact students being able to participate in graduations, I think there's been some that has gone in around that.
Katie and Donna?
So I have a couple of questions. When Robyn was talking about all we're doing in the summer, and I think the number was 2,300 kids who had signed up for the K through 8, or through rising ninth graders. Do, and you might not even know this, but I'm assuming there are more than that number of students who are behind. And what do we have, what kind of plans do we have for the students who, for whatever reason, don't take advantage of the summertime catch-up learning? And then the second question is, the ninth graders can go to the, you know, the K through rising ninth graders, and also can they go to the rising program for the high schoolers? So they can do both?
Yes. Yes, they can do both. So that's the shorter, easier question, yes. So for students who are behind, so the students that we have really targeted for our summer learning program, that is, as we were saying before, an extension of the COVID catch-up plan, are students who are currently two years or more behind grade level. And so our students who need our support the most are those for whom we are providing the most support, as almost, if you will, an extension of the school year. However, we do know that there are other students that need our support. So we are going to continue, not only through the self-paced summer learning activities, but also into next school year, to continue the COVID catch-up plans offerings, some very similar to what we are offering now. So much more intensive supports, both during the day and outside of the school day. So if there are students who, who we have contacted about attending summer learning, but for one reason or another choose not to, we will continue to support them during the school year, as we will with additional students. And we will bring more information to you about next year's COVID catch-up plan soon.
Thank you. And then the other question I have is just a clarification, and it's in response to an email we got, and this is for the public health people. Is there any science that says wearing masks for children is not safe and that is actually unsafe? Is there anything that says that?
I'd be happy to answer that question. Again, this is Chris Urbina. I'm the medical officer of both Boulder and Broomfield. There's significant research about the safety of masks in children three years and older in terms of not only protecting them from getting infections, particularly COVID-19, which we're mostly concerned about, but also the safety of them just wearing masks. And you've seen in schools, and I know the teachers and staff can relate to this, children are very good generally about wearing their masks. They follow directions extremely well. There's no hazards associated with wearing masks for children. And that's been both proven by CDC as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Well, that's what I thought, but thanks for just confirming that. Donna?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, I'll, I'll be the person on this board that's probably speaking for a lot of people that are afraid to speak out, but I have read some studies, and I, I'm not contradicting, but that there's the mask-induced exhaustion, exhaustion syndrome. There's a lot of different things that, I've seen kids with runny noses, and they use their mask to, you know, do this, and the masks become pretty dirty and ineffective during the day. And I've passed lots of groups, some in private settings where the kiddos are outside playing without their mask. And I think that we've gone in a circuitous route, route, so to speak, with the mask about, there was a question on Governor Polis' Executive Order D 2021-079, where the question was asked, do children need to wear a mask in school? And he said, "The executive order does not require masks for the age group of 3 to 10." So I wanted us to think about that, but I also want to state, too, that I appreciate Kathy bringing up the emergency use for vaccination. Sorry about this, this is really getting to me. We're pushing it out very quickly for these young students, and all of a sudden, we're down to 16-year-olds, and maybe in May, 12-year-olds. And I want to make sure that we, as a district, hear the voice of some parents that are concerned about an emergency use vaccination being pushed onto their 12-year-olds, that, that we're, we're not making people feel like you need to jump into this before they feel comfortable about it. Thank you.
Okay, great. I guess as a follow-up question to that, Dr. Urbina, for public health, what are you all thinking about in terms of masking moving forward? So for instance, if someone, if I go to a health facility to see my doctor, is the expectation that people will have been vaccinated, or will people who are not vaccinated be wearing masks if they're delivering medical services?
Thank you for that question, and I want to acknowledge the Board of Education members' comments. I, I do think that it's very important that we look at the science and the data before we actually approve vaccines from the 12 or 15-year-olds. That's why I was a little hesitant about giving you an exact date, because I think it's important to show in that population that the efficacy, the effectiveness is there, as well as it's safe, it's safe. So I appreciate those comments. Now, back to your question, President. The expectation is that, that we will like, and I'll leave this up to Lexi as well, the, we're likely to continue the masking in all indoor areas for people over the age of 10, and, and because of the potential risk of having infection spread in close areas. And so that does apply to schools as well as other businesses, et cetera. So we're likely to continue that order, but right now, it's on a month-to-month basis. We're going to be considering that in the next week or two about continuing that order for all of Boulder County. Secondly, it's likely that, that mask orders for outdoor events or outdoor activities is, is going to continue, likely to be not required. But obviously, we do not know, and as Lexi alluded to earlier, we only have, we have significant numbers of people in the older age groups that have been vaccinated, two-thirds of that older population and more, and certainly in the 70-plus. We're still waiting to get people vaccinated, and as more people are vaccinated, the risks of getting infection are significantly reduced, both indoors and outdoors. So we're just, we're not sure yet, so we're still going to recommend, encourage people to wear masks outdoors and required indoors. I don't know, Lexi, if you have anything else to add to that?
I, I think that summarizes it well, Chris. I, I took part of the question to be a question about kind of what do we expect social norms to be going forward, which isn't as much of a legal or public health order question as it is kind of an expectation, a community expectation question. And I would hope that folks recognize that getting vaccinated protects you, it protects those around you, but if you're not vaccinated, then you, you might want to continue to wear a mask, particularly if you don't know the status of the folks that you're around.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
One other piece, President. We are seeing in the hospitalizations and the severe illness are people that are unvaccinated. And I think that's, that's an important comparison when you think about vaccination protects you against severe illness and hospitalizations. Being unvaccinated increases the likelihood, if you do get COVID, of having this severe disease. So I think if you, if you put it in that perspective, we're hoping that that social norm continues to encourage people to get vaccinated. Obviously, if you don't want to get vaccinated, that's your choice. I encourage you to seek out information that's credible, and, and go to our website at boulder, bouldercounty.org to get, to get more information about vaccines, as well as how to protect yourself.
Thank you.
I think one, one final note, because it's just, it's such an interesting statistic that's been a little bit overlooked, but you know, there was the pause put on the J&amp;J vaccine because of the blood clot. But when they took a closer look at the data, they actually found that there's a higher chance of having blood clots because of COVID than there was because of a vaccine exposure. So you, you actually have a higher risk of, of having a blood clot if you contract COVID than, than from the vaccine. So I think, you know, it's important to kind of keep some of those statistics in, in perspective sometimes.
Okay, thank you. As always, we are so grateful for our public health partners who've been joining us on the pandemic journey, and thank you for being here again tonight. Yes?
I have a question for Tiffany, but not for...
Okay, so, perfect.
So Rob, I, I really enjoyed the project-based presentation. I'm just curious, was that made available to every school and every teacher, or what was the rollout? And can, I just wasn't sure about the scope of it. I thought the projects were pretty cool, but it looked like it was more teacher-based and more isolated than across the district.
This, okay. It wasn't a requirement for all teachers in the district to do, but our hope was, if we provided the materials, the toolkit, the sample units, many of which were aligned to content that teachers would likely be teaching in the spring anyway, that we would be able to engage more teachers through aligning the toolkit that way. So not a requirement, just in this kind of given year to, required of teachers seemed, seemed a little difficult. So providing the tools and the encouragement and the resources, as well as publicity through a number of options. Randy and the communications team published it in all of our communications that go out. Dr. Sam Essia did a couple of podcasts on it. We did a weekly wake-up episode on the availability of the project and the toolkit, as well as creating that general project path and publishing that information on the spot for our parents to be able to engage in it, so students who maybe don't have the opportunity to do it at school can do that same project or like project at home with their parents or caregivers.
And do you have a sense of how well it was received? I mean, kind of what the participation was? Was it available K-12?
It was available K-12, and the communications that we put out have that availability of those sample units. We have the K through 2 elementary, 3 through 5 elementary sample unit. High school, you have the math and language arts as examples, and then the high school construction, as well as those project, the general project that could be modified or adapted, K through 12. So hopefully, with the communication and the various venues that we tried to advertise the availability of the toolkit, build something that was robust enough for people to be able to engage in and use it. To the question of, do we know how many? That's a great question. We know for sure, I would, I would estimate, just with knowing the project design, design team who participated, and who expanded those projects specifically at those schools where they had a teacher on the design team, I think we have at least 250, 300 students that have participated so far. And the, the closure for submitting student work to the virtual museum isn't until about the middle of May, so we'll know a little bit more at that point in time, too. We did ask for people to submit a form to let us know if they were going to engage in the project, but I'm not sure how accurate that data is in terms of what we got back. So fingers crossed that it's well received.
And so for the virtual museum, that'll be open to everybody to, I mean, because this work is really wonderful work, so I just am wondering how that'll get rolled out and how people will be able to observe it.
Yeah, there's actually, and I'm sure we'll do further communication, as that gets closer over the summer, we'll have to spend some time putting it together and organizing it. And there's already a button on that bdsc.org/pbl2020 website set up to be ready to display that virtual museum.
Thanks, it's really exciting.
Thanks, Ted.
Any other questions? All right, with that, we can move on to public participation. So we've continued our public hearing and public participation for our hybrid meetings. So now the board is meeting in person, but because of the COVID restrictions, we're still having our public participation virtually. In order to participate, we ask that you sign up prior to noon on the day of the board meeting, so that's usually a Tuesday, and you just connect with Laura Schaefer, who will get you on the list, and then you sign up and go into the Zoom room, and you're ready to go. So we're very happy to have you here. We ask that you can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items are heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. We ask that you limit your presentation to two minutes, and, and this allows everyone to speak. If we go over an hour, we will finish public comment at the end of the meeting. We do mute your phone at the end of two minutes, and the way that works is at 30 seconds, you'll see a yellow card, Laura will hold one up. At 10 seconds, you'll see an orange card. Try to finish up, but at the end of the two minutes, the timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. But don't, if you didn't say something important at that time, just send us an email. We do read all of our email. We get very... We get very little email, so it's not a, right now, so it's a... So just please share your thoughts via email if you don't have enough time and you feel like you didn't get something important in there, all right? So with that, our first speaker is Michael Gaeta.
Hello, thank you. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Michael Gaeta, I'm a health professional and BVSD parent. And I'd like to address two issues here, masks and vaccines. First, masks, let's just be honest here. We must not pretend that universal masking of everyone all the time, especially children, is based on science, evidence, or data. It is not. We have 40 studies over 40 years showing no benefit for masks in preventing viral infections. When we compare states and countries with mandatory versus optional masks, the data shows no benefit, now with a year of evidence to look at. Masks are dehumanizing and are injuring children, physically, psychologically, and developmentally, according to current evidence. For example, a German study of 26,000 children confirmed adverse events in 68% of them, mostly from low oxygen. A Vietnamese study showed a 1300% increased risk of infection compared to no masks. And wearing masks outdoors is honestly absurd. Masks, as they're useless and harmful, according to the data, not anyone's opinion, must be optional starting tomorrow, or the board must provide to parents solid evidence of benefit greater than the harm of imposing such a needless and dehumanizing measure on children. Related to vaccines, it's unethical to encourage these experimental vaccinations in children for two reasons. First, they're unnecessary. Children are nearly immune to COVID, and their mortality risk is near zero. And with safe, effective medical treatments available, you do not need a vaccine. Second, they're unsafe, and there are no good long term safety studies in children. 86,000 injuries and 3,200 deaths reported already, and CDC data confirms that less than 1% of injuries are even reported. Research in Israel confirmed vaccine mortality hundreds of times greater in young people compared to no vaccine. New Yale research shows 60% of new cases are in the vaccinated. So children, since there are near zero risk of sickness or death, and the very real risks of injury from these experimental vaccines, it will be irresponsible for BVSD to subject children to such risks. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Cynthia Neveson. Is Cynthia there?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm Cynthia Neveson, a parent who, like the previous speaker, has concerns about the COVID vaccine plan for kids just discussed. I'd like to encourage us to pause and consider the ethics of rushing to vaccinate children with an experimental product for an infection against which their own immune system's worse well 99.99% of the time, according to the CDC. The experimental COVID vaccines in the clinical trials were not shown to stop transmission of coronavirus, but only to mitigate clinical symptoms. So the main reason to get these injections is to protect oneself against COVID. And even that benefit may last only a year or less before a booster shot is needed. For any medical intervention given to healthy children who are just beginning their lives, ethically, the benefit to them must be much greater than the risk. Yet the experimental vaccines have already generated an unprecedented number of reports to VAERS, including 3,200 deaths. Some of these reactions, such as the brain blood clots, are so undeniable that use of the J and J product was suspended for 11 days in this country. One victim, 18 year old Emma Burkey, was put in a coma and underwent three brain surgeries to repair blood clots she developed after receiving the J and J shot. And I'd like to disagree with the claim just made that there are more blood clots due to COVID itself than to the J and J vaccine. That's misleading on several levels, and particularly because it doesn't distinguish the young people from older people. Brain clots, the blood clots are happening mainly in young women. So I'd like to ask, what kind of risk of this dangerous side effect from an experimental vaccine is acceptable for, say, a 12 year old middle, middle school student? Is it one in 50,000, one in 100,000? Some would say the level of acceptable risk approaches zero, given the near zero risk of COVID to 12 year olds. And blood clotting is only one of many serious side effects. Should BVSD really be encouraging children to take these experimental jabs, given the serious short term injuries already reported and the unknown long term unintended consequences? Thanks.
Excuse me, Carolyn Boninski. And I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Carolyn Boninski, and I would like to express my concern over the scientific guidance that the Boulder County Public Health is providing to BVSD. At the last school board meeting, Dr. Urbina of BCPH encouraged everyone to get an experimental COVID vaccine, even if they had recently recovered naturally from COVID. His advice is contradicted by experts like Dr. Huma Norchasm, who have warned that viral antigens persist in the tissues of naturally infected for months. When the vaccine is used too early after a natural infection, or worse during, or worse during an active infection, the vaccine activates a powerful immune response that attacks those tissues throughout the body where the viral antigen persists. Furthermore, the best science suggests that natural immunity lasts for at least 17 years after coronavirus infection, making the vaccine unnecessary for those who naturally recovered. Dr. Urbina also encouraged BVSD to vaccinate all teachers, regardless of the fact that many are young women at very low risk from COVID and of childbearing age. The short clinical trials of the experimental vaccines did not address whether these products are safe for pregnant women. As of April 20th, 462 pregnant women have reported adverse effects related to COVID vaccines to VAERS. Finally, at the last school board meeting, Dr. Urbina gave vaccines full credit for declining rates of COVID-19 hospitalizations in the county, even though hospitalization rates had been in steep decline for weeks before the first vaccination.
Okay, our next speaker is Erica Wyke. I hope I got that right.
Hi, my name's Erica Wyke. I'm a health professional in Boulder County, and my child goes to school here. I am here to speak for her because although she wants to go to school, she does not want to wear a mask every day. And I would like to talk about the effectiveness of masks. I heard Dr. Urbina say that masks are effective and that it's on the CDC website. Well, it's also on the CDC website that they're not effective. There's a study from Hong Kong in May of 2020 showing masks, hand washing, surface cleaning had no effect on influenza transmission, which is the same sized particle as COVID, as the SARS-CoV-2. There's also a study from the BMJ Journal from 2015 of medical workers wearing cloth masks and medical masks, where the penetration of particles on a cloth mask was 97%. And it also increased their risk of infection. In July, the CDC came out with a study of patients that got COVID, and 70% of them said that they were wearing a mask all the time. 15% of them said that they wore a mask most of the time. We've had so much different information on wearing masks, from starting with "don't touch your face", to "don't wear a mask", to "wear a mask", to "wear two masks". On the box of the masks, it says, "It does not protect against SARS-CoV-2 and other viruses. The viruses are too small. The negatives of wearing a mask are self contamination, development of face lesions, acne, decreased oxygen, increased CO2, increase of stress hormones, immunosuppression, increased bacterial levels, headaches, fatigue, and negative cognitive function." Please, stop making our children wear masks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tova Jacober.
Good evening. I've been a subject teacher of third graders at a local private school in the BVSD district for 12 years, as well as a parent, former attendees. Now that no adults, other than teachers and school staff, are permitted in the classrooms, I'd like to give you an update of the effects I've observed firsthand of mask wearing on eight and nine year old children. And it's a mandate that is in violation of our state and county public health orders, which exempt children age 10 and under from mask wearing. According to WHO, at the present time, the wide quote, "at the present time, the widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not supported by high quality or direct scientific evidence, and there are potential benefits and harms to consider", unquote. According to a data analysis performed by scientists from Cambridge University, children under the age of 15 are more likely to be struck by lightning than to be struck dead by COVID. What I have witnessed in the classroom is a significant decrease in the ability to concentrate in the children, which is no wonder, given the state of hypoxia or oxygen deprivation that is created from restricting children's ability to breathe fully with a face covering on. According to data posted on the federal government National Institute of Health website, chronic hypoxia and elevated carbon dioxide levels lowers cognitive function, adversely affects innate immunity, and increases rates of severe, acute, and chronic respiratory diseases. We're not meant to breathe our own off gassing. I've always taught the third graders, when we breathe out CO2, the trees and plants breathe it in, and they turn it to oxygen that we, in turn, breathe in. I've also observed how the children are suffering from increased bouts of anxiety. Many have expressed how sad they are that they can't see their grandparents because they're afraid of killing them by infecting them. They're afraid of taking off their masks now, even outdoors, because even when maskless, seeing others in masks creates a sense of angst. Fear and anxiety and worry are powerful immune suppressing emotions, well documented in the psychoneuroimmunology.
Okay, our next speaker is Ila Rivera Lozada.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to know if the members of the board have read and are aware of the last updates on both the state of Colorado and Boulder County mask mandates. The last state executive order, D 2021 079, signed in April by Governor Yar Polis, clearly states that, one, face masks are only required within indoor spaces. Two, face masks are only required for individuals age 11 and older. Three, individuals who cannot medically tolerate a face covering exemption for the requirements. Four, all measures should be consistent with the American Disability Act, the Civil Rights Act, the Colorado Undesiscriminator Act, and others. The last Boulder County Public Health order follows the provisions of the state ordinance stipulating the same exemption. In this context, the school lacks the authority to require all students to wear masks at all times. One, by not allowing medical exemptions, and this regarding the age, limits the school's implementation of both orders. So the attempt to enforce them is fraudulent. Two, masks to prevent viral transmission is a medical intervention and conducted it when the law expressly states. Otherwise, it's tantamount to practicing medicine without a license, which is a felony. Three, the school is often charged criminal liability by discriminating against students with medical conditions that cannot tolerate the mask. If the school board insists on imposing a legal restrictions on our children, I demand a signed document stated in, so that the responsible person can be held legally liable, not only for violating the current laws, but for all current and future medical consequences of these illegal mask requirements. In the absence of such signed document, my daughter, age nine, cannot be told in any circumstance to wear a mask anywhere in the state of Colorado. And all necessary legal actions will be taken against the persons that violate the orders and her rights. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Ashley Dorn. Ashley?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Ashley Dorn. I have three kids in BVSD schools. I'm concerned with the BVSD COVID response and the continued use of mandated masks at all times on BVSD properties. My kids and some of their friends have complained about headaches, anxiety, tiredness, being unhappy and depressed since going back to school full time, wearing masks all day. As mask mandates pour through the U.S., attorneys quickly pointed out the liability concerns associated with mandatory mask wearing, citing one experiment from June 9, 2020, showing all individuals dropped into low levels of oxygenation within minutes when putting on masks. One third of the participants dropped below 80% oxygenation into a zone of extremely low hypoxemia, where cardiac arrest, organ failure, and death can occur. In a study with dentists and dental assistants who adopted new protocols since COVID, headaches jumped from 16% pre-COVID to 65% and 40% noting that it was hard to breathe some of the time. These studies are talking about adults. And if these are, if they are severely affected, what do you suppose is happening to the kids? Wearing masks for seven to nine hours a day while in school and in sports? What legal liability will the school district face if mandated mask wearing continues and medical complications or death occur? The WHO says on their website, quote, "Universal community masking is ineffective at preventing infection from respiratory viruses, including COVID", and that there is no evidence available on mask usefulness to protect non sick persons, and recommended wearing against medical masks that may create a false sense of security against COVID-19", end quote. The CDC website says, quote, "No significant reduction in transmission with use of face masks." I ask you to remove the mandate from BVSD schools now and make them optional. I ask you to remove the requirement to wear masks while playing sports now. Let everyone in BVSD know masks are now optional and give them their medical choice back. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anita Lee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I think it is a mistake to give children the experimental COVID vaccine. I am shocked that you are even considering it. Dr. Fauci said that the vaccine is only designed to mitigate serious symptoms, but children and teens very rarely have serious symptoms anyway. Their own immune systems are well designed by nature to give them broad, long lasting immunity. Why should they risk the potentially horrific side effects of the vaccines? Nobody knows the long term effects of any of the COVID vaccines because there were no long term studies, none. These were bypassed for Operation Warp Speed. Skipping long term studies is reckless. Please, do not put children at risk with hasty implementation of these experiments. Even two years is not long enough to determine long term effects of injecting synthetic messenger RNA into anyone. How do we know what will happen five years later or 10 years later? We don't, we don't know. In pre-COVID days, vaccines were typically studied for eight years before being authorized. Now, with this new experimental treatment involving messenger RNA, how can you think that a few months' study is enough to know what the long term effects will be? If the school district recklessly promotes these experimental injections for children, who will be liable if long term harms done? Will Dr. Urbina take responsibility? Who will the subjects of these experiments go to if they are harmed? What recourse will anyone have? Please, I urge you to observe the precautionary principle and protect children and teens from being experimented upon.
Okay, our next speaker is Gretchen McLaughlin, who has given two minutes from John McLaughlin. Gretchen?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my son, okay, I'll start. My son does not want me to read his testimony tonight. He's a little bit concerned that this may be perceived, you know, strangely by his teachers and friends. And he does not want to be the target of bullying or being treated unfairly by those in authority. So I'm going to go ahead and read my testimony. So I believe masking our children is unhealthy. It is a violation of the OSHA laws. In September, my son was having difficulty breathing, feeling sick and dizzy after 15 minutes of wearing a mask, covering his nose and mouth while running around in the high school gym, playing basketball due to the increased carbon dioxide levels within the mask. He began to experience headaches and told me one day after practice, he felt like he was going to pass out while playing. I called our doctor, explained the situation, and he wrote a medical exemption letter for my son from wearing the mask due to his breathing issues. I emailed the medical exemption to the athletic director and was told my son could no longer play basketball unless he could wear the mask. His medical exemption was denied. He stated, and I quote, "He was simply the messenger of the rules sent forth by the Colorado High School Athletic Association and the county and state health departments." My question to the board is, under what authority does the athletic director, CHSA, and the school have the right to deny my son's medical exemption from our doctor when the, when the local county and public health order clearly state there are exemptions under the orders for those... those individuals who cannot tolerate a face covering? According to the orders, you don't even need a formal medical exemption letter from a doctor, one can merely claim that they have a health issue and cannot wear a mask. So why are the local public health and governor's orders not being followed by the school? Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Blair Chandler. Is Blair there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you for having me. My name is Blair Chandler, and I wanted to just say that I am concerned about the COVID protocols that you have in place right now. I wanted to thank the board member who had the courage to actually speak up for people who might have some other opposition to what would actually to this narrative of vaccines are safe and vaccines will get us back to normal. And basically, my concern is for safety and privacy, and I want to know that if my kid chooses, or we choose, that to not get vaccinated, that there's privacy in there, and there's a respect, and that there's information coming, informed consent, informed information that really brings the risks forward in a way so that parents can make informed choices. I think that's essential, and I want to make sure that's protected in our schools for our children and for ourselves. I feel that this is something, bringing up today the slides about another death. Well, it'd be really nice to know, for example, instead of propagating, seeing graphs and numbers, and it just is, it's exhausting, and it's a lot of fear. Like, what is, you know, if our kid is in school and there's a kid that tests positive, and who is doing the lab work, and what magnificake accuracy? So I guess my point is, please, let's make sure that the information that comes forth is thought out, that we have real conversations that allow us to have both the, both the respect of real conversations and not polarized like we are and are not. Thank you.
Okay, Katie Walker. Katie? Is Katie there?
Sorry, my house was messed up.
Oh, okay.
And I'm looking for your timer. Are you just making the sound?
She holds a sign when you have 30 seconds left. Laura will.
Okay. Let me know when I can start.
Go ahead.
I would like to point out that there are many medical experts worldwide who strongly disagree with your medical advice. There are many peer-reviewed sources that prove masks are not safe or effective. These studies indicate that masks decrease oxygen levels, cognitive performance, and increase anxiety and depression, to name a few. Why is BVSD ignoring this information, especially the evidence of increased anxiety and depression, when the district has recently spent millions of dollars adding psychologists and counselors to address exactly those issues? As for COVID injections, BVSD is encouraging them, despite the fact that they are not FDA-approved and are 100% experimental trials. During these trials, a high rate of people have reported blood clots, reproductive and neurological issues, anaphylaxis, and death, per FDA and VAERS reports. It's alarming that teachers and district leaders are so horribly misinformed and seem to have zero concept of the risks of this investigational vaccine. Instead of BVSD, instead, BVSD is encouraging students to partake, while vaccine clinics are endorsed by BVSD and recklessly popping up left and right. If BVSD continues to enforce masks or looks to mandate those, these injections, I will join hundreds of others who will leave BVSD. I wholeheartedly oppose this coercion and the onslaught of unsubstantiated fear-mongering, propaganda surrounding BVSD's COVID input. To quickly touch on Chris Urbina's comment about rare vaccine reactions reported to VAERS, it's important to note that only 1% of vaccine injuries and deaths are reported to VAERS per HHS. I urge you to lift the mask mandate immediately. When people are harmed and true informed consent wasn't provided, the district, neither the district nor the insurers will have enough money to pay off the lawsuit.
Okay, our next speaker is Ronald Cabrera.
Do not, do not mandate masks and vaccines in our schools. What we care about here is the social and emotional health of our children. We entrust the most precious part of our life to you. We need the school board, children are getting sick, and thank God, discussing what has happened, and what is happening in some schools is not good for their social and emotional health or their development. Don't open yourself up to litigation, because under federal law, vaccines cannot be mandated if they are not approved by the FDA and are only given emergency use authorization. Even the FDA explicitly states that the vaccines are, quote, "An investigational vaccine not licensed for any indication," and that, quote, "Any promotional material relating to COVID-19 vaccine clearly and conspicuously must state that this product has not been approved or licensed by..." "...but has been authorized for emergency use only. It is not affected and can't catch the virus, so be made to take vaccines and use masks." Children do not have a high level of ACE2 receptors, where the COVID-19 virus binds. Quote, "ACE2 are important for viral entry," quote from Matthew Harding, medical doctor at UT Health. "This 19 have mild or no symptoms at all." Don't take the easy way out and succumb to fear unless instilling fear, which is not a virtue, into our children, ruining the best, most crucial developmental period of their life by mandating masks and vaccines, especially vaccines that are dangerous and not properly tested. The supermajority of people don't properly wear masks because they are designed for single use. The masks being worn by the general public are contaminated. I've watched videos from the CDC, the WHO, and by doctors, showing these masks are contaminated and that they are single-use, not, not being, not, not to be taken off and put back on sometimes for weeks at a time.
Okay, our next speaker is Erin McHugh.
Hello, I am a mother of two in Boulder. My 10-year-old is a fifth grader at Columbine Elementary. She asked that I share some of her words regarding having to wear a mask all day at school, even when playing outside. Quote, "I don't like wearing a mask because it gets hard to breathe. Sometimes, when running around, it gets real hard, and I get tired sooner than when I am not wearing a mask. I can't take a whole big breath when I'm wearing a mask, and I'm starting to have headaches on a regular basis. It is also hard for me to wear my glasses, they fog up all the time. The way classes are grouped now, I don't ever get to see or play with my friends because they are all in another class and we are all separate," end quote. What we have learned from this virus is that children are far less adversely affected by the illness than others, and what we know about pandemics is that we need herd immunity in order to protect the most vulnerable and build immunity among the community. This herd of immunity is developed by the young and strong who are not greatly affected. By masking our children, suppressing their immune systems and their oxygen intake, we are risking their health in other ways the virus doesn't, and taking a great risk to our own integration with this virus. The current vaccines being provided, nay, pushed, are all on an emergency allowance and are still in trial period. I do not believe we should be allowing our children to walk blindly down a road that is a potentially deadly one. Thank you.
Okay, Alex McCarthy-Hessel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Alex McCarthy-Hessel, I'm a father, and I'm concerned about the original, or emergency, emergency authorization around masking has morphed into a majority of daily life spent behind a mask. While this may seem benign to some, the effects of hypoxia, physiological hypoxia, and ultimately pathophysiological hypoxia are long-term and irreversible. I want to read a short statement about the pathophysiological implications of hypoxia. Oxygen is essentially required by most eukaryotic organisms as a scavenger to remove harmful electron and hydrogen ions, and as a critical substrate to ensure the proper execution of enzymatic reactions. All nucleated cells can sense oxygen concentration and respond to reduced oxygen availability, known as hypoxia. When oxygen delivery is disrupted or reduced, the organisms will develop numerous adaptive mechanisms to facilitate cells survived in the hypoxic condition. Normally, such hypoxic responses will cease when oxygen levels is restored. However, if the situation becomes complicated, if the hypoxic stress persists, a series of chain reaction-like gene expression cascades, termed hypoxia-mediated gene regulatory network, will be initiated under such prolonged or intermittent hypoxic conditions, and subsequently leads to the alteration of cellular function and/or behavior. As a result, irreversible processes occur that may cause physiological disorder or even pathological consequences. A growing body of evidence implicates that hypoxia plays critical roles in the pathogenesis of major causes of death.
Okay, our next speaker is Brian Coffey, who was given two minutes from Dharma Coffey.
Hello, I'll be reading my daughter's testimony first and then mine. Hello, my name is Dharma Coffey. I wanted to share my experience with the mandatory mask-wearing at my school. I will be a high school freshman next year attending BVSD. Last week, I had an uncontrollable reaction to wearing my mask at school. During the school day, I had to go to the nurse's office since my allergies got really bad. I already have allergy issues, and my ability to breathe is hard having to wear masks. My dad said he talked to the school, and they said we could apply for a medical exemption if we need to, but I feel kind of weird having my parents do that, because I would be the only kid without a mask, and I don't want to be seen as different from the other kids. I just wanted to share my story with the school board, and also for other students that may be feeling the same way but are afraid to speak up due to being judged by other kids and teachers. Thank you for your testimony. Recently, the NCBI.NIH website released the results of a study done illustrating the dangers of face masks physiologically and psychologically. I would like to directly quote one of their findings. Quote, "Breathing is one of the most important physiological functions to sustain life and health. The human body requires a continuous and adequate oxygen supply to all organs and cells for normal functioning and survival." The study also showed 81% of healthcare workers developed headaches from wearing a mask while on duty, a sign of dangerously low levels of oxygenation, and all of them felt like their headaches affected their work performance. I don't know if any of you feel the same way, but you might want to think about that. The study then goes on to say, quote, "Wearing face masks mechanically restricts breathing by increasing resistance of air movement during both inhalation and exhalation processes. Prolonged and continued effect of wearing face masks is maladaptive and could be detrimental to health. There are also extensive psychological problems of masks and social distancing are causing for children. Suicide rates among children, as well as anxiety and depression, have been skyrocketing the past year. This includes Boulder as well. In a recent study conducted by nonprofit organization Fair Health, American children are now 10 times more likely to die from suicide than COVID. You had mentioned in your presentation before, BVSD, that you were trying to develop social and emotional learning as being a priority. How is that possible if kids have to be wearing masks on their face and social distancing?" Now for my testimony. I have some questions for the board and Dr. Urbina. Number one, where are you getting your information supports that masks are not detrimental to children's health, and are actually effective in preventing COVID? From recent information, this has become public, it has been concluded that states with mask mandates and social distancing requirements are reporting higher rates of COVID. I will provide the board with this information if they like. Number two, who are the, quote, "Experts advising you?" Because it would appear the information you're receiving, the chronic mask-wearing, as well as everything else you said tonight, is absolutely inaccurate. Is Dr. Urbina advising the board and Boulder on the response to COVID? As a parent, I am highly concerned about Dr. Urbina's credibility to make honest and ethical decisions when it comes to health and our children, and community, based on the following information. In 2013, there was an issue with the Colorado Department of Health and Environment Laboratory Services Division, where Colorado's legal defense community was alleging potentially faulty lab results used by prosecutors in criminal cases. There were accusations of what appeared to be a cover-up surrounding the lab that tests evidence in criminal cases. In an article published on June 10, 2013, by the Huffington Post, and I am quoting, "Health Department Executive Chris Urbina is defending labs' actions. In an interview with the Associated Press, he noted its role confirming listeria in a cantaloupe in 2011. Doug Wilson, the public defender, said, 'I am appalled at Chris Urbina in comparing listeria outbreaks to humans being incarcerated as a result of potential faulty lab tests and clearly biased testimony.'" Who will be civilly and criminally liable, not if, but when, we start to see health problems with our children?
Okay, our next speaker is Jean Marie Redent. Jean Marie?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am the mother of three current BVSD students and a longtime Boulder resident. I have two concerns that I would like to bring up as decisions are being made for next school year. First of all, I strongly oppose all mask mandates for all schools, all students attending BVSD. These masks we are wearing were not designed for continuous wear. We have no idea of the long-term devastating effects we may be putting on our children, our future generation of leaders. We do know that the lungs are responsible for the excretion of gaseous waste from the body. With each exhale, we release toxins. If our mouth and nose is constantly masked, as we inhale, we breathe in these toxins right back into our bodies. Having our children masked for multiple hours a day, day after day, month after month, is eventually going to lead to some alarming health concerns, concerns far greater than the very low transmission rates of COVID that the CDC and the WHO say are associated with children. We also know that the human body, and particularly growing brains, need oxygen to thrive. As we limit our oxygen intake, again, we have no idea the long-term devastating effects we are causing on the developing, developing brains of our children. My children are suffering from headaches, fatigue, lack of focus, irritability, anxiety, and skin breakouts from wearing masks in school all day. My second concern is regarding Senate Bill 016. I strongly oppose this bill being implemented into BVSD. Encouraging children 11 and older to take the HPV and the hepatitis B vaccine in schools without their parents' knowledge or consent is highly controversial. Our brains are not fully developed until 25 years old, how can a minor make an informed decision on a health choice? This is a slippery slope and most certainly violates our constitutional rights for medical freedom. Peer pressure and bullying will be most hurtful.
Excuse me, our next speaker is Gregory Condor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I work as a tutor to a handful of BVSD middle school and high school students. I want to be a voice for these individuals and share a little bit about their experiences. Many of my students I work with have displayed obvious signs of anxiety and depression over the past year: disrupted sleep, feelings of lack of connection, and lack of motivation to participate in activities that previously ignited their spirits. I have asked my students how they have been affected by the current situation, and they all stated that they really miss seeing and interacting with their friends. Our kids are being deeply damaged by the measures you are adhering to. A few of the most important aspects of the education system are the social interactions and personal connections formed by students while they navigate the dynamics of school. We are social beings, and social interactions are vital to our health. The students of these schools are being told to social distance, wear a mask, and get injections. These students need to feel the loving embrace of their friends, need to see the smiling faces, and need to have the right of informed consent to medical choices. If you look up the death statistics due to COVID-19- Our kids are not being directly affected by this disease, but are being indirectly affected by the demands of the BVSD school board. You. Recently, a Stanford professor has released a study that states that face masks are ineffective at preventing human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious disease such as SARS-CoV-2 and COVID-19, and that face masks are detrimental to physical and psychological health. There's another report from the CDC that states that mask mandates have reduced the transmission of COVID-19 by the highest amount of 2%. 2%? How is that even significant? I want to know, where are you getting your information that masks are helpful and not harmful? And I also want to know if you are letting people know that they are still allowed to claim medical or non-medical exemptions from these injections, and that the non-medical exemption includes having strong personal beliefs, i.e., if one really doesn't want to receive an injection, they don't have to, and that is enough. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Amber Byers.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I wanted to make sure you are all aware of the parent survey at Pioneer. The response to our survey has been overwhelmingly against the proposed changes. 91.7% of parent surveys stated that they do not believe these changes will result in equity at Pioneer, and the majority are opposed to both the scheduled change and the late start. At your work session last week, I heard over and over again that the rationale behind these changes is that the small deficit of instructional time each day adds up over the year to a real loss of learning time. Yet I heard no mention of why taking away about 30 minutes of instructional time is either supposed to be a benefit for Pioneer or at least not harm students, especially if they are already suffering a severe loss from the pandemic. Further, the students who are struggling the most at Pioneer are the ones in poverty. They're also most likely to be the ones who need free school breakfast and who rely on the bus to get to school. So, providing supervision for students on late start days only helps kids who can get to school independently. This won't feed the kids who need it most because they'll have to wait for the school bus and miss breakfast. Plus, all students will benefit from a consistent morning routine that lines up with the peak learning time of 7:00 AM to noon. The only rationale against an early release I've heard is that it interferes with after-school sports. This can easily be addressed by starting sports immediately after school and on an early release, and then providing teachers additional planning time after that. It all comes down to who do you want to help? If you're trying to close the opportunity gap and increase equity, then you need to go out of your way to prioritize the most vulnerable members of our community first. Our principals concerned about the lack of equity in teacher pay at Pioneer due to the longer school day. Instead of hiring supervisors for the late start who may not be bilingual, please increase teachers' pay in relation to their extra time spent. This will allow Pioneer to support the fully bilingual, belligerent, and multicultural experience of our students.
Our next speaker is Connor Evans.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So, I just want to start off by saying that I'm really proud of all the parents in community who have shown up and spoken the truth. And how is it that the concerns of the parents of the children, that this board is tasked with protecting both their health and well-being? How is it that it is so opposite to the concerns of the community whom they represent? They said that cases are rising in Colorado. Based on what? The PCR test? Even the late founder, Carrie Mullen, said that the PCR test was never meant to diagnose infectious diseases. They have been cycling it up to 40 times, which is why we have seen people test positive and negative in the same day. It's also why we've seen fruit test positive. When you cycle it enough times, you can get a positive COVID test from anything. Transmission control. I want to know what randomized, controlled trials Chris Urbina has seen that lead him to believe that masks work? There are none. It is propaganda pushed by the corporate-controlled media. The safety of masks? I encourage the board to turn off their TVs, go get a microscope, and go look under that microscope at the nanotech worms that are on the blue masks, the N95 masks, the NIH masks, and figure for yourself what they're doing there. Or better yet, get a CO2 parts-per-million monitor and watch it go well above the dangerous 5,000 ppm threshold. You'll see it go all the way up to 10,000. How is it that everyone is unaware of this? The media control in our country goes back to the Bank of Morgan. William S. Paley was the founder of CBS. He studied brainwashing techniques at the Tavistock Institute. We are all being lied to. It's time to wake up. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Paul West.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm here to talk about what happened at Cole two years ago that just came to light through a chalkboard article about a principal putting a child in restraint and rendering them unconscious. And I am a BVSD parent and my child goes to school there. So, I find this event deeply troubling on a number of levels, and there are two elements that I struggle with more than anything else. First off, requiring a restraint to last five minutes to be formally cataloged in BVSD's annual use of restraints measures is ridiculous. That's a massive amount of time to restrain someone. It's two and a half public comment speakers. It's just ridiculous. Whoever crafted that policy failed you, and you need to look at the rest of the policies that person or team has implemented because setting that as your threshold to formally document this is beyond belief. And the second thing that I find deeply, deeply disturbing is that it took the principal 11 months and a state investigation to go back and get trained on how to do a hold that rendered a child unconscious correctly. 11 months. 11 months where he might have had to use that hold again. 11 months when training is offered monthly. If I did something I thought I was trained to do but did it wrong and it ended up hurting a kid, I would be in the next training class, and the one after that, and the one after that, until I knew the techniques by heart. I ask some people, "If you messed up on something you were trained to do and someone got seriously hurt, what would you do?" The consistent answer I got was, "I'd go get trained again." I was taught to watch what people do and not what they say. And in this incident, either oxygen was deprived from their lungs, or blood flow was cut off to the brain, and the response by the principal was not to go get retrained. When questioned about this, he said there were other conflicts that prevented him from getting trained. I want to know what's more important than getting this restraint technique right? The lack of caring, concern, self-reflection that maybe I could have done this better and I should go get trained correctly is appalling to me. I find it deeply disturbing, and this makes me have zero faith that he has the best interest in regards to the health and safety of our children at heart. Take this time right now and think about those 11 months where he couldn't be bothered to go get trained correctly.
Okay, our next speaker is Meg West.
She's presently muted.
Nope, I'm there. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
That was pilot error. Sorry, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The BVSD community was not made aware of an incident from two years ago where an eight-year-old boy went unconscious in the arms of the current Cole principal, and it only became public knowledge because of an article written last week exposing the event. I thought about the fact that in spite of the changes that BVSD has made in terms of training for CPI being required every year instead of every two years, and managing the schedule of who needs to be trained electronically instead of on paper or not at all, I am far from satisfied. Even if everything was done correctly, which according to the CDE investigation, it was not, a child went unconscious and no one was held accountable, and no one in the BVSD community was made aware. How is this possibly acceptable? As the principal of the school, that person is the leader and should be up to speed on how to properly handle emergency situations with knowledge, a well-thought-out assessment of the situation, and appropriate actions taken. There is no training on how to administer compassion, understanding, patience, listening, and intuition. Those traits are what the current principal at Cole was lacking in this situation, and I feel was possibly a root cause of the child's escalation. I am trained to work with neurotypical children who are prone to physical outbursts, so I know that things can escalate quickly. But I also know measures to diffuse the situation. Those measures for diffusing this particular situation were seemingly not applied, and ultimatum is not a method of diffusion. What is the written protocol after a staff member who is in lapse of their CPI training has a child go unconscious in their arms? Is it administrative leave until the investigation is completed, or until that person completes his or her CPI training? In this case, it took almost a year and a state investigation for this principal to complete this training when it's offered monthly, and no evident repercussions were administered for this tragedy. Do the teachers that are out of compliant with CPI training get notifications? Do they have a certain timeframe in which to become compliant? Is this all documented? There needs to be a continuity for this situation.
Okay, our next speaker is Jenny Miller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Today, I'm also addressing the findings of the CDE investigation of State Level Complaint 2020-901 regarding the Cole Elementary Principal dated March 16, 2020. The report outlines two separate incidents where threats of physical force were used, where various restraints and transportation of a student not compliant with CPI training were used, where non-emergency seclusion in a room unsafe was used, and all of this by a principal who is not CPI certified. Why was he not placed on leave for an immediate investigation? Two separate incidents that were not adequately reported from the principal to the district or from the district in the annual restraint review. And what is more frightening is these two separate instances were only brought to light because a parent was brave enough to seek a CDE investigation. How many other instances have gone unreported to parents, have gone unreported to and by the district? We will never know, and this is the fear and worry that the families of Cole students are now living with. Is my child safe at school? This is a common but broad question. There are so many potential dangers at school. School staff should never be a danger that parents have to worry about. I understand there have been policy and reporting changes and additional training. However, I have little information on what those changes are, and so I am not comfortable waiting to see if those actions are helpful for a principal who violated PPRA rules on at least two separate occasions, then did not renew his expired CPI certification for 11 months after those incidents. This situation is not only unfair to children and parents, but also teaching staff. How can they with any confidence call the principal in for assistance with a child? Having administrators whom families and teachers cannot trust is detrimental to a learning environment. Fear and distrust in the Cole community is toxic, and it is being called out. In order for trust to be restored, the principal and the district needs to be accountable to the parents, to the teachers, and most importantly, to the children. I expect specific answers to all of the questions outlined in my emails dated 4/21 and 4/25.
Okay, and we're going to be close enough to an hour, and as we often do, we just let everyone speak so no one has to wait till the end. So, just in case you're waiting, we are going to get to everyone. The next speaker is Shamisa Bar.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Hi, I'm Shamisa Lindeman, the mom of three kids in Boulder Valley Schools. I'm speaking to the board tonight because I am a very concerned parent of Cole Elementary in Brumfield, and I don't know where else to turn. The incident that has been in the media and covered tonight is very troubling, and I do not feel like it was handled well. I am not here to talk more about that. Instead, I'm here to talk about the patterns of behavior that have been ongoing at Cole. There is a lack of communication, accountability, and mistrust that has been in place at Cole since the arrival of the current principal. The lack of respect for parents and teacher voices is destroying the culture at Cole. According to many of us, the principal is not meeting the district standards of an effective principal. He is not doing his job to foster a positive school culture that is equitable for all students, staff, and the community. We as parents can provide numerous examples of this if we were given the time. This has created a toxic environment for teachers, students, and parents. This has also resulted in losing many beloved teachers who have worked at Cole for years. Our small school will be losing six teachers in this year alone, two have transferred by the principal, and four more requesting transfers to other schools. Parents are also pulling their kids out of the school, and there has been a drop in enrollment for the last several years coinciding with the timing of the current principal. These difficult situations are sometimes blamed on COVID or the systematic changes that are taking place throughout the district, and that change is hard. Yes, change is hard, but in order to achieve it, there needs to be support, guidance, open communication, and trust, which is not currently the case at Cole Elementary. Unless the rumors are true and the district plans to close Cole's doors, and if that is true, we need to be informed of that decision so we can invest our time elsewhere. But if you do believe in Cole and support the community there, we need your help to rebuild the trust and positive atmosphere at the school for our kids, our teachers, and our community. There are many parents who stand with me in believing that these important changes cannot be achieved with the principal.
Okay, our next speaker is Patty Delgado.
Thank you, President Marcus. I will be giving my statement in Spanish and in English. Can you hear me okay?
It's actually a little hard to hear you.
Okay, I'll get closer. Is it better?
It's getting better.
Okay. I'm as close as I can be in my computer, so I'll try my best to speak loud. Presidenta Marcus, miembro del Consejo Escolar, Dr. Anderson. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Patty Delgado y soy la actual vicepresidenta de Boulder Valley Education Association. Hoy estoy aquí muy orgullosa frente a ustedes para anunciarles que fui elegida la primera presidenta latina de BVEA. Mi término de tres años comenzará el primero de junio. Quiero agradecerles a ustedes por todo lo que han hecho, por los estudiantes, los docentes, y la comunidad de Boulder Valley. Desde marzo del 2020, nuestro sistema educacional ha tenido que enfrentarse a nuevos desafíos y cambios constantes que nunca hubiésemos imaginado. Su dedicación a nuestros estudiantes y educadores durante estos tiempos inconcebibles ha proveído una guía y apoyo constante para nuestra comunidad, y les quiero agradecer por poner la seguridad de nuestro distrito al frente de todo. También quiero aprovechar esta oportunidad para agradecer a Terry Mulford, la actual presidenta de BVEA, por su continuo apoyo, su asesoramiento, su liderazgo, y su amistad. Mirando hacia el futuro, sabemos que todavía hay mucho trabajo que tenemos que continuar y muchos obstáculos en el camino. Pero tengo la certeza de que cuando nos unimos por una causa solidaria, podemos laborar juntos para lograr el éxito de nuestros estudiantes, de nuestros docentes, y de nuestro distrito. Muchas gracias por su atención. President Marcus, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson, good evening. My name is Patty Delgado, the current vice president of Boulder Valley Education Association, and today I am proud to announce that I have been elected BVEA's first Latina president. My three-year term will commence on June 1st. I want to thank the-- Okay, I'm done with this throwing. I want to thank the school board-- You guys. --for your commitment towards students, our educators-- I'm so mad, Cole, I say that. And I got it all on me. Come here, Vico. Yeah. All I need is a thing. There seems to be a lot of-- Since March of 2020, our education system also endured new challenges and constant changes that we would have never imagined. Your dedication towards students and educators during these unthinkable times has provided our district with sound guidance and support, and I want to thank you for putting the safety of our district community first. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Terry Mulford, our current BVA president, for her continued support, mentorship, leadership, and friendship. As we look ahead, we know there is still much work to get done, and yes, there are still many obstacles to overcome. However, I am confident that when we unite for a common cause, we can work together and continue building bridges for the success of our students, our educators, and our district. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Christina Turco. Okay, our next speaker is Christina Turco.
Unmute, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have come to the clarity that the absolute most important thing for me to teach my kids is to think for themselves and honor their body. Tonight, I'd like to address bullying and drugs. We all know that peer pressure is one of the hardest things to resist. I want my kids to feel confident in saying no. I asked my kids what they learned from BVSD. Here's what they said to do: Just say no, walk away, or reach out for help. So here I am today advocating for them. The drugs I'm concerned about happen to be new and experimental. So far, many people have died. Others are getting weird skin rashes. Others have developed neurological disorders like constant shaking, and doctors and ERs have no idea what to do. Others are having anaphylactic reactions. Some people have developed blood clots and are dying weeks later. Some scientists have even found that getting cancer down the road is almost guaranteed. You can understand with these kinds of risks, as a mother, I will do anything to keep my kids from taking these drugs. What drugs am I referring to? They are called experimental injections for COVID. These injections have not been approved by the FDA. Since the manufacturers have no liability for injury or death, others will be blamed: doctors, individuals at public health agencies, individuals on a school board pushing kids and families to take them? That is yet to be seen, but you can bet liability will be assigned. Please help us. What should we do? Just say no, walk away? I'm taking your own advice. I don't want to walk away, and yet I don't feel comfortable that our right to decline experimental medical treatment will be fully honored and respected. The gravity of this risk is not worth taking. I'm asking for you to provide assurance that our choice will be unequivocally honored and guaranteed. Should you choose to attempt to mandate an experimental medical treatment or even suggest it, you have become the bully.
Okay, next is Yale Cohen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. An eight-year-old BVSD boy, a special education student with an emotional disability, refused to do his schoolwork. He began ripping up papers and throwing them, and then broke a pencil and threw it. This time, however, as you on the board and administration no doubt are aware, the teacher called the principal, who then deemed it an emergency, lifted the child out of his chair, carried him to a seclusion room in the school, and closed the door, leaving the boy alone inside. When the boy continued to escalate, the Cole Elementary Principal entered the room, stood behind the little boy, and as I read in the Chalkbeat article, gripping the boy's crossed wrists until his body went limp, his eyes fluttered, and he fell at the mouth. This little boy could have died. I'm about halfway through this state complaint, which appears under restraint and seclusion decisions on the CDE website. It's pretty upsetting, hard to get through, and the district lost. Restraint and seclusion in our state is not so well-defined nor well-monitored. BVSD has the ability and responsibility to make sure that restraint and seclusion ceases in our district. As a special education advocate, I end up involved in cases like these across districts, and I know that some training, some awareness, and some better tracking doesn't fix this problem. This summer, a growing group of committed parents and professionals will be working on getting rid of restraint and seclusion in our state for the most vulnerable of our students, those with disabilities. I am hoping that BVSD will be joining the effort and committing to stop the practice and find better means of dealing with dysregulated children with special needs. Thank you.
Okay, and Laura, do we have another speaker?
No.
We, no, we do not. We do not. Okay, wonderful, thank you. So our next item is board communication. Thank you to all of our speakers for showing up virtually. We appreciate it. Would people like to take a break now or after board comment?
After board comment.
After board comment? Okay. Who would like to go first? Oh, Kitty, okay.
I was part of the group that went to Fairview, and I really was impressed by seeing the changes that were made with the bond, so that was very interesting, and thanks for arranging that. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was brought up by two emails we received today from middle school students, and that has to do with dress codes. And this is the same complaint that my adult daughters came home with too around dress codes, and that is that being enforced not fairly, being enforced on girls more than on boys, and with girls being held responsible for boys' behavior. And I just want to say that I think that is a terrible idea. I think it gives the wrong message to girls and to boys, and that schools need to have dress codes that are gender neutral. For example, if you don't want to see anybody's underwear, then boys can't wear pants hanging down, and girls can't have their bra straps showing. That's gender neutral. And it needs to be enforced for boys as well as girls. And so I'd just like to encourage schools to look at their dress codes and come up with something that's more equitable.
Okay. Lisa.
Let's see. Patty, very glad for your election to be the president and looking forward to working with you and near you. Additionally, tonight, I loved the presentation from Kiffany, and it's late, so I imagine there's no chance she's still watching, but I want to give a special thanks to the fantastic Charlie Nelson. Her video about her mom brought tears to my eyes. And finally, I guess, thanks to Fairview for hosting us. It was cool, I have to say. It was a very normal and very safe experience that we witnessed there. I would feel great about my kids going to school there. And we talked to some of the folks in the math department who had some really cool stuff they were doing about learning as, you know, time is a variable rather than learning is a variable, so that was fun. Maybe worth noting that Fairview and all our high schools also have fantastic science departments, and we can't really overestimate the importance of science literacy.
Just quickly, I too want to congratulate Patty on her election as president of BVA, and I too look forward to working with her going forward.
Okay, Donna?
Okay, I want to thank a lot of the people that came. Congratulations, Patty, by the way. And I want to, I'm a bit anxious, so it's really hard for me to breathe with this on so I can understand what a lot of the parents were saying and a lot of-- I'm just kind of a fish out of water here, sometimes on this board, and I do represent a voice that a lot of people are afraid to speak up about. I spent a lot of time last night looking at some research on both sides. I want to say that science changes, and we've seen that in this pandemic. Think, if you want to think years ago, think Pluto. Many schools have allowed parents and children this choice in masking up. Additionally, notice how our masks, we pull them down to take a drink, we speak clearer without them. I put it on out of respect for you guys, but I don't feel very comfortable in them, and it's hard to breathe. I believe it's time to allow parents to make the decision of allowing their young children to wear or not wear the face mask or these coverings. I'd like to make a motion. So I move tonight that we discontinue to mandate mask-wearing for our students and allow this to be an option for parents to decide.
Okay, so this is interesting. Kathleen and I were talking about where we make a motion in a meeting, and do we want to do it during agenda setting, or can we do it during board comment? Because we generally don't have discussion in board comment.
I kind of consulted on this already, and I knew--
Oh, with Kathleen?
No.
Okay. With, okay. Kathleen, are we good? And Donna, forgive me, I need to consult too, okay? Because you didn't give me a little email.
I'm just saying, yeah. I hadn't decided till I heard all of everything and I read last night. I wasn't sure what I was going to do, and I decided during the comments.
Okay. Kathleen, what's my procedure guidance here?
Okay, so I think there are two issues here. The issue with the agenda and a motion, and an open meetings law issue. If we don't have an issue on the board agenda identified as a potential action item, we have an open meetings law issue. So my legal advice would be that if this is a motion the board would wish to entertain, that it be noticed for a properly noticed meeting and included on the agenda so that our public is aware that there could potentially be a vote on this issue.
Okay, and in the case that I, as the person who sets the agenda, won't put it on the agenda, how can she make the motion to get support from the other board members to get it on?
Yeah, well, we have a need for clarity in our board policy on agenda setting. As President Marcus, you noted in your opening comments, this board has not had an established practice of adopting an agenda at the opening of the meeting. Typically, with other boards, that's the time during which a board member who has not had an item included on the agenda can make a motion to amend the agenda. Because this is such an important issue for this board, we could expedite revision of that policy, adopt it on an emergency basis at the board's next meeting, so that the board would have clarity in how the agenda process is going to work here.
Does that sound good to everyone, to get that change in as quickly as we can? Okay. So, and then do I need to respond to the motion, or do we need to respond to the motion right now?
With Robert's Rules, is that appropriate, that I just wait for agenda setting to make this motion, or?
The problem is that Robert's Rules don't adequately contemplate our open meetings law. My concern tonight is with the open meetings law and not Robert's Rules. I can't in good conscience advise this board to take an action that I believe would be in violation of that state law, and that's the concern I think that we're addressing. So it's not the Robert's Rules item as much as it is compliance with the open meetings law. To be honest with you, I'd really like to look at Robert's Rules and see what the proper action is. This is not a situation I've encountered professionally previously. If the board member is not interested in withdrawing the motion so that it can be entertained as we laid out in accordance with the new policy, then-- Well, it also hasn't been seconded, which means there is an emotion pending right now. So maybe we can just start with that simple piece.
Okay, all right. So thank you. So there's some lack of clarity, which I, this came up also about a month ago. I can't remember what else it was, and then we had an issue with it, and we need to fix this. And thanks for, you know, pointing out that, the lack of clarity that we need to get on this. Who would like to go next?
So since this is an open meeting, and like Kathleen just said, if there's no second, then that's the end of it.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, okay. Richard or Kathy?
I'm just not-- Donna, were you done? I wasn't sure if that was the end of your comment, because your mic's still on, and I wasn't sure whether, I don't want to interrupt what you had to say. I just will join everybody in welcoming Patty. I'm really excited to have our first Latina as head of our union, and I want to congratulate all the hard work that's been going into negotiations, and I look forward to successful completion of the negotiations in the next couple of weeks. And thank you to Rob and to Don Stensrude, and to everybody who helped make our trip to Fairview a success. It really, it was our first school tour in 14 months, and it was comforting to see school being school as much as school could be school with the conditions that we're facing. And then I just want to say thanks to Jonathan for the presentation. I don't know if anyone tuned in to the work session, but there was a lot of hard work that went into his presentation on how we were trying to evaluate how we're doing across all the different demographics and challenges that we have in our schools, and so I really look forward to seeing that being implemented. I know Jonathan worked really hard on that, and you could see in the timeline all the years of work that went into it, and thank you, Rob, for picking that up and carrying that along too, because I think it's going to be really important for our community to see where the discrepancies are and to-- Tina will appreciate this comment, what gets tested gets taught, and so what gets measured also, I think, will help us figure out where our lapses are and what we need to be doing to try to close those opportunity and achievement gaps. So I just want to say thank you to Rob and to Jonathan for bringing that forward, because I think it's important work, and I like the idea that it will evolve, and that as we figure out more measures and more things that our community wants to see, that we can change those metrics as we go along. So thank you for all of that great work.
Okay, oh yeah, Richard?
I just want to thank all the speakers over here tonight. And felicidades, Patty, congratulations for being elected the first Latina in BVA history. I just also want to make a comment regarding Pioneer. And I know I sent our superintendent an email concerning the late start on Wednesdays, whether there's going to be breakfast provided for the children that are going to be attending and taking advantage of the supervision time before school actually gets started. And if there's going to be transportation for these particular students, especially those students that are in free lunch, and I'll wait for your answer. But anyway, thank you very much for everyone participating tonight, and again, muchas felicidades, Patty, and congratulations.
Yeah, thanks to all of our public participants tonight. Felicitaciones a Patty para su nueva posición. Me damos alegría que estás haciendo este trabajo para nosotros. The other piece, I just wanted to remind the community that we're having a Title IX advisory meeting on April 29th. If you're interested in learning more about how we can address Title IX and what the concerns are, please join us. I think the information is on the webpage. The other piece is, because there's been a lot of communication around this, I thought I'd say it one more time. We are looking for bus drivers, food servers, and custodians for next year. So if you are looking to help us out next year, we are looking for you, and we'd like to hear from you so we can provide a great working atmosphere, and we'd be really eager to see you. The other thing is I wanted to commend Bill Sutter and his team on yet again getting the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International. Nice job. You know, budget, fiscal responsibility, and accountability is really important to a school district. It's one of the biggest things we do as a board, is make sure that we're spending our money wisely and prioritizing it, and Bill and his team do an amazing job making sure that we're getting the best use out of our resources for our kids, and that's just a really big part of what we do. The other piece is for some of the parents who feel that there was an issue with their student, I want to remind the community of the KE complaint process. This is our policy that describes how you can make a complaint to the district. It usually starts with a teacher or a director, and so please, you know, coming to public participation is one thing to talk about a situation, but in order to go after a complaint, you're going to want to go to policy KE. The fastest way to get to the policy is really just to go to Google and just Google BVSD KE complaint, and it will take you right there instead of trying to actually navigate the website. The other piece is just there's a mention of SB 016, which is a bill that allows minors to access resources for sexually transmitted diseases, and as a subset of that, they're able to request a vaccination for HPV. And generally, the board just doesn't weigh in on vaccination bills. We have not historically done that. The state sets our vaccination policy, and we follow it to a T. And nor do I know of any vaccination policy being contemplated at this point that would force a vaccination. I think that would be fairly unusual. So I haven't heard about it, but I don't know everything that's going on down there. But in case parents are worried that there's going to be some forcing of vaccinations this year, I don't think that's going to happen. So that is all I have. Um, so that is all I have. Um, I was, I was surprised tonight by my fellow board member, or I shouldn't say fellow, that's terrible, by Board Member Myers. I didn't know that there was such a, we've been talking about masks and vaccinations for 12 months, and I hadn't heard this, so thanks for bringing that up and sharing it that with the board, and I know that there are parents who have issues with that. Uh, I personally am in the position that I feel that we should continue our partnership with public health. I think those are the best partner for us when we're looking for recommendations to health, and I will continue to trust their partnership in our endeavors as we move through the pandemic. So with that, would you all like a break, or should we move on? Donna?
Just quickly, I want to add that Dr. Urbina said tonight, over the age of 10, and that Governor Polis' statement and also our department's statement is not, you know, there's three to 10-year-olds that we're still mandating, that, um, we've got this circuitous route going of, um, our school district is deferring to the local public health department, which in turn say they must answer to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Meanwhile, CDPE does not require masks for children under age 11, but says local communities will decide, just, thank you.
Indeed, yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about that with Dr. Urbina throughout the year. I think I asked that specific question. All right, great. Break or consent agenda? Where are we? Break? Awesome. All right, so we have three information items on the agenda tonight. The first is a sustainability and energy update from Rob Price. There's an echo.
Good evening, President Marquez, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Tonight, Dr. Gita Carroll, our sustainability coordinator, and Jeff Medwitz, our energy manager, will be providing an update on the goals that we set back in 2015. So this was the last update, which was our sustainability management system directed by Board Policy. And then they're going to provide an update on where we're at with providing our next update. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gita Carroll.
Excellent. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having us tonight. So the district created its first sustainability plan in 2009 with updates in 2012 and 2015, and as Rob mentioned, we are working on the 2021 update this spring and celebrating roughly 10 years of having this plan in place. The sustainability plan outlines visions, goals, and strategies for incorporating sustainability into operations and curriculum, and is, is supported by Board Policy ECF. The sustainability plan helps us acknowledge our efforts around sustainability, coordinate as an organizational system, provide meaningful measures and KPIs so we can track our progress, partner in align with local agencies, and report out to the public. The current SMS covers four main areas, each of which has five-year goals and strategies. The areas are buildings, materials, transportations, and education, and there are overarching themes of climate and health. So tonight's presentation is an update on the progress of the goals spelled out in the 2015 plan. A full written report with more detail will be available early next month. Today, we will cover just the highlights, and then talk briefly about next steps, and then hear from a special guest. The district has worked with the Green Schools National Network Team and interviewed diverse stakeholders, reviewed key documents, and analyzed data relating to key performance indicators to develop this preliminary progress report. Climate is the first overarching theme, and in the original sustainability plan, we established a stretch goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80% and become climate neutral by 2050. So as shown on the figure of this slide, the initial baseline in 2007, 2008 was around 43,000 metric tons of carbon equivalent. And in 2018-19, the greenhouse gas emissions decreased by 13% from the initial baseline to 37,527 metric tons of carbon equivalent. So this is similar to taking approximately 1,000, 1,621 cars off the road for each of the five years of the sustainability plan. This 13% reduction represents decreased emissions mainly in the areas of electricity, natural gas, and transportation. Health is the second overarching theme of the sustainability plan. Operations has made great improvements to support the physical, social, and emotional health and well-being of all who work, learn, and play in BVSD schools. From transportation to food prepared in cafeterias, from indoor air quality to outdoor classrooms, and from academic to extracurricular programs, BVSD has sustained its commitment to the community in this area. The 2014 Bond and Construction Program allowed BVSD to make improvements in all schools relating to indoor air quality, and I'll talk more about that in a bit. Also, the BVSD's Food Service Department moved into the New Culinary Center, which further supports the district's partnerships with local farmers and regional providers of fresh whole foods. In fact, the district was named the first real certified school district in the country. This award is presented to restaurants and food service providers that are committed to promoting both health and sustainability. Now, we will switch gears and to report on the goals in each of the four categories of the SMS, the first being education, with the vision of all students literate in sustainability and all staff incorporating sustainability into their positions and practices. This category has six goals focusing on professional learning opportunities, creating green teams, interweaving sustainability into district communications, and developing As a highlight in the education category, all but one BVSD school had an active green team in the past five years, or multiple groups of students participating in one of the many sustainability programs we provide to our schools. This includes students working and learning in gardens, student teams leading composting efforts at their schools through the Green Star program, classes and teams participating in the Shared Savings Energy Program, competing to reduce energy, and much more. Sometimes these groups are part of a class or extracurricular activities such as student council. Sometimes the work is supported by outside providers such as EcoCycle. All of these opportunities help support and build a culture of sustainability and learning in our schools using real-world, hands-on, and meaningful opportunities for creating positive change.
Good evening. The overall vision for the buildings category was to create healthy built environments for learning that strive for zero energy. And in particular, we had goals around water and energy production, and increase in renewable energy, and goals about new building design. Um, as Gita mentioned, the full report will contain all the details for these goals, but I'll share just some of the results for some goals, and also discuss the impact of the 2014 bond. So our water goal was very ambitious. It was to reduce baseline water use by 50%. So the baseline, 2008 baseline chart that's in front of you shows the percentages above or below that year. Cost is indicated in green, and water use is in blue. While we didn't meet our aggressive goal in 2019, the 20% reduction that we did achieve that year is remarkable because the bond added more than 280,000 square feet to our district, and then also the related irrigated sites, yet we've maintained lower water use. So this has been accomplished by the thoughtful design of buildings and sites, and due to the irrigation efficiency work conducted by our grounds team, who really deserve a lot of credit. You will note that our water utility fees have increased dramatically since 2008 despite the decreased consumption, and out of all utilities, I see water rates with the greatest increases year in and year out. So another buildings goal challenged us to reduce fiscal year 2008 energy consumption by 20%. The chart that you see in front of you describes energy use intensity, sometimes described as EUI, and it's the annual energy used, which is then normalized by building area. So it's measured in thousand BTUs per square foot. I liken it somewhat to be the MPG for buildings, just because it describes efficiency, but unlike miles per gallon, it's a low energy use intensity that indicates a more efficient building. Also, this data that you see in front of you is weather normalized, and that accounts for just our normal weather impact on consumption to give an apples-to-apples yearly comparison. So this KPI graph shows our district-wide EUI since 2008, and we missed our energy reduction goal by only 4% in 2019, and the reduction is primarily due to all the bond work. You will note there on the right, the large reduction in fiscal year 2020, and this was due to the district's shutdown of buildings caused by COVID. And then just to conclude the buildings discussion, I'd like to share just four highlights of the 2014 bond. For buildings for which we have a year's worth of post-construction data and not including any of that suppressed building use data from spring of 2020, building efficiency actually improved an average of 24% comparing pre-bond energy use to post-bond energy use. Brumfield Heights is, in my opinion, a really compelling story of bond efficiency. Despite adding air conditioning to a building which was historically uncomfortable, efficiency improved 44%, and the air quality was dramatically improved. And our efficiency design work has earned us over $878,000 in rebates from our partners at Excel Energy, and all of those rebates were added directly back into the bond program. And then finally, many ask me how much money we've saved from our energy program, and this question involves the term cost avoidance, and cost avoidance is the difference between what was actually spent on utilities versus what would have been spent had we not improved our buildings. It's somewhat theoretical money because we never actually see it, but we just avoid it. But with that said, to give you some context of what our energy savings looks like, since 2016, if the bond had not improved our buildings and we continued business as usual, the cost trend line suggests that we would have likely spent an additional $2 million for electricity and gas over that five-year period. So our efficiency work is allowing us to be spending public money more wisely. And I, I must recognize the staff from operations, the maintenance, and the bond teams, because without their support and dedication to these energy goals, we certainly wouldn't be in this position.
The vision in the materials category is to preserve resources and support healthy learning environments. This category included six goals focusing on waste diversion, purchasing criteria, indoor air quality, and food served daily. We set an aggressive goal that through source reduction, composting, reuse, salvage, and recycling, we would achieve 50% waste diversion district-wide in five years, and I'm thrilled to report that we met that goal. This is well beyond the state average and even the local averages. BVSD continues to make diverting waste from landfill a priority. Some of the programs in place that help support this are EcoCycle's Green Star Schools Program that captures compostable waste from classrooms, cafeterias, and bathrooms. All BVSD schools and sites have recycling coupled with educational programming and training to improve the reduced reuse recycle behaviors of student and staff. The Food Services Department has increased their use of Lean Path apps to track kitchen and food waste, and they also only use reusable containers, trays, and plates. And just a side note that that we, that did have to shift this last year because of COVID, but hope to move back to that. Also, all buildings now have water bottle filling stations. Another area where the district made incredible progress is indoor air quality. Before and after all bond-funded projects, the district had an IQ consultant collect data on thermal conditions, ventilation adequacy, and cleaning effectiveness. In addition, surveys distributed to faculty and staff across the district have identified potential problems that may negatively impact indoor air quality in classrooms. The district also collects health data as part of absentee notices and reviews the data for correlation between IQ and health. So the goal establishing, of establishing best management practices for measuring and monitoring indoor air quality has been substantially surpassed, and our work is looked at now as being a leader nationally in this area. The IQ advisory team established by the board also helps to disseminate air quality information. The team has included up to 19 volunteer members, including staff, principals, teachers, parents, and community members. The IQ team has developed standard operating procedure recommendations for indoor air quality and integrated pest management that will be incorporated into practice in 2021. The team is also working on recommendations for non-toxic school supplies and ensuring that green cleaning and non-toxic products are used throughout the district. In the transportation category, the vision is decreased community and district emissions associated with transportation. Three goals helped to support this work, and they were focused on community vehicle miles traveled, partnerships, and district fleet emissions. The district has a strong relationship with RTD, and together, RTD and BVSD serve all neighborhoods. RTD has also put extra buses online where needed to align with BVSD belltimes. The district has continued to explore options with RTD and municipal partners to expand ecopass opportunities for students, including the development of a community-wide ecopass program. The district has partnered with local entities to perform surveys of transportation habits and preferences of students, parents, and staff. These partners meet regularly and share data and methodologies on tracking transportation. The district also has a robust Safe Route to School program and has implemented multiple student-centered transportation programs that promote alternative modes of transportation. A huge highlight of this is our trip tracker program run by Peter Hurston Transportation, where we've had upwards of 5,000 students participate in a year. This program rewards students and families for using alternatives to single-family car transportation to BVSD schools, and is looked at highly in our community by our partners as, as being very successful way of changing behavior and connecting with the community. We also have 12 traffic gardens hosted by Safe Route to Schools, and bicycle education is provided through videos and onsite instruction for our schools. So that's a summary of some of our progress in the past five years, and we are now in the process of creating the new five-year action plan. On March 4th, we launched the community engagement process, which some of you attended. At there, we gave an update on the initial progress and started dreaming about the next five years. So in the last two months since then, we've held several focus groups and interviews to dive deeper into goal development. We're currently drafting goals, which will go back to focus groups in the ad-hoc committee for review, and we hope to have the new action plan to the board by the early fall. During the March workshop, participants were asked to describe how they see sustainability as part of the district, and this is a wordle from that question. You can see the words "integrated," "inclusive," and "equitable" as prominent. Students and staff are central as our nature and outside. Healthy schools, learning, and collaboration also rose to the top. This new plan will look different. So our last plan was focused primarily on operations, looking at waste, energy, materials, buildings, and transportation. The new plan will cover all four of the systems on this slide. Curriculum instruction will look at experiences, knowledge, skills, and also values and mindsets. Climate and culture will look at relationships, health, and equity. And leadership will look at decision-making structures, procurement, finance, HR, and learning systems. And of course, operations will be included in the new plan as well. And now, I am very delighted to introduce Rowan Jennings, who is a freshman at Fairview High School and is part of the green team at that school, which has been placed for many years. Um, Rowan is going to talk a little bit about the work they've been doing this year and what they're looking forward to for next year.
Hi, thanks, Dr. Gita, and hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. Um, like Dr. Gita said, I'm currently a freshman on Fairview High School's net zero team. And COVID has made it very difficult to get anything done this past year, but we have still been meeting weekly on Zoom to discuss and work on various projects. Our biggest project this year was banning styro, or attempting to ban Styrofoam, unfortunately due to new...
I think we just lost Rowan.
I couldn't hear her anyway.
Yeah. Rowan, are you there?
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Okay, do you know where?
Oop, you're cutting out again. You were talking about the Styrofoam ban. I can still in, I know some of the things she was going to highlight until she's able to hopefully join back in, but the, the group is working on banning Styrofoam in Boulder County, and they found that constitution prohibits that under local control, so they are working to build momentum at the state level now, on a bill, to ban Styrofoam. They have been meeting with an Air Quality Control Commission once a month. They were also involved in the sustainability plan that we talked about tonight, so they had members... had members involved in that process. And they continue to collaborate with other green teams once a month in the area and other high schools. And right now, working to brainstorm for next year. And one of the things they set up was to be part of the Renewer Schools Energy Challenge for next year. So they have done awesome work, and I'm so sorry that you're hearing this from me and not from her, but they're an amazing group. All right.
All right, and I just, if Rowan can hear me, thank you so much for joining and for waiting for such a long time. I first thought you were a new part of the public health team when we saw you on the face. And we're so delighted you're here, so we got to hear a little bit of your contribution. Any questions for Gita or Kathy?
Just have a quick question for Rob that probably won't surprise him. The slide talked about how we're actually measuring indoor air quality. We're not really measuring indoor air quality yet, are we? Isn't that something we're hoping to do going forward, like room-to-room or...?
We actually are. So we have CO2 monitors in a number of our classrooms throughout the district. Not every classroom throughout the district, but a number of them. So yes, we monitor them throughout every school. That reports back to a dashboard, and then we make adjustments accordingly.
And at some point, Rob, it'd be great to see how we're doing. And I mean, against what kind of standards and what that's looking like, since we've put a lot of energy and money into keeping our indoor air quality high, it would be really good to kind of see some of those results.
So what we will be presenting to you, a post-bond, is we went in and did pre-bond measurements of all of our buildings. And then post-bond, we're doing measurements. So that's what the University of Tulsa contract that comes to the board every year, that's what they continue to do. So I would expect to have that to you more than likely the fall of this year, which will give us a summary of what we've seen, again, comparing the two, you know, pre-bond renovation, and then pre-bond and then post-bond renovations.
And I was also being a little more specific as to how our air purifiers are doing in keeping the indoor air quality high, since, as we all know, we have an airborne virus. So if we could get some data back on how that's working too, I think that would be really comforting to our public as we continue to have conversations about the spread of the virus and masks and all that, I think that would be helpful information to have.
Kathy, I will just, and anybody that's watching, just rest assured, our team continues to watch CO2 levels across the board, just to make sure that we're maintaining. And I want to say that Molly's maintaining right now. Molly McLaughlin is our director of facilities. Her team, 700 parts per million is where we're at. So anything that goes above there, we make adjustments to bring in more fresh air. And if it stays below there, we leave it alone unless we're seeing extremely cold temps, et cetera. But yes, we have, and again, that's a dashboard that Mark Hernandez with the University of Colorado and the University of Tulsa, they've helped us set up, just so we're maintaining that.
And just in one sentence or two, can you just explain to the public why measuring CO2 is kind of a proxy for making sure that our indoor air quality is at a good level?
Again, it's really just about bringing in fresh air. So we're comparing CO2 levels outside to indoors. So, and I should know this, but I believe outdoors, we maintain about 400 parts per million. So when we have a class, you know, if you think about 20, 25 kids in a classroom, sometimes higher, we're maintaining that 700. So that just tells us that we're bringing enough fresh air. Anything greater than that, Mark and Richard have, you know, acknowledged the fact that we want to bring that back down. So open up the dampers, bring more fresh air into the building.
It's just really exciting. Thanks, Rob, and thanks to our public for supporting all the work we've been able to do with our HVAC systems and the air purifiers. I think it should give people a lot of comfort about what we're doing to keep our staff and students safe.
Other questions? Kitty?
Yeah. Can you explain what you mean by striving for zero energy?
That is a great question for Jeff Medwitz. Jeff?
Yes, that's a great question. Zero energy refers to the term zero net energy, meaning that if we added renewables such as solar panels to a school, that the difference of... Or I guess the easiest way to explain it is an equation. So you subtract energy used or produced by solar, and you subtract that from the grid use. And if it's less than or equal to zero, meaning you basically cancel out the net or the grid use, that means that building is a zero-energy building.
Thank you. Other questions? Rob?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Carroll and Jeff for the incredible work that they're doing around sustainability in our school district. You know, we may take their expertise in all the things we're doing for granted. We are one of the leading districts in the country in this work. In addition to the amazing investments and expertise we've brought in on indoor air quality, I just wanted to thank them, just remind our public, remind our board, remind our team how lucky we are to have these amazing people. And just districts from across the country look to us on how we're doing some of these things, truly just leaders in this area, and just so I wanted to thank them very much.
Other questions? Yeah, I'm very proud that we're part of a sustainable district. It's a huge deal, and to move over to renewables is awesome. So it's a great step in the right direction. All right, so our next item is the bus driver shortage.
Thank you, Board President Mark. As Rob pulls this up, I'll kick this off. I think that, you know, as we start to think about next year and think about some of the big challenges that we face post-pandemic, I think that Rob is going to outline for you all something we see as a significant challenge, something we're striving to solve. But I felt like it was important to bring this to the board and the public to let everybody know where we exactly are and try to make sure that we're engaged in that. This isn't an issue that's sneaking up on anyone. So, Rob, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And Tina, thank you for the shout-out to hire more bus drivers and custodians and food service workers. We need more people doing that right now, so I really do appreciate that. You know, right now, according to recent transportation news, 80% of respondents right now are lacking bus drivers. And this is up and down the front range. I did a quick Google of bus driver shortage today, and it had over 21 million hits. So this is not something that's just impacting us. It's impacting RTD, it's impacting Amazon and FedEx and others around us. We've got some tremendous challenges here in Boulder Valley School District. When we think of the cost of living with the increased competition, when I say increased competition, we're all seeing a lot more Amazon vehicles. We have competition right in our backyard with FedEx and UPS, et cetera. But bus drivers are, it's just become a hard position to fill during the pandemic. You know, significant health concerns related with pandemic, et cetera. So the next slide just kind of shows you a general decline of bus drivers since 2017. So 2017 was the last time we were fully staffed at 225 drivers. So right now, on average, we average about 190 routes. So that's 190 routes in the morning, 190 routes in the afternoon. So you might ask, why do we need 225 for 190 routes? Well, we have absenteeism that we have to cover, which usually ranges from 15, 18% a day. And then we have trips associated with activities and athletics. So based on where we are at today on this general decline, we are anticipating that we're going to be 50 to 60 drivers short of needing to fulfill our obligations for all routes in this district. So it's a mountain to climb, and that's why we're here tonight, just to inform you and then hopefully a call to action or a community to apply for the open positions that we do have. So what are we doing to address this challenge? Getting the word out. We're advertising, we currently have postings on 25 online job boards. Hopefully, you continue to see our advertisements on social media. We have advertisements on BVSD and RTD buses. We have an advertisement on RTD billboard. We have, we're promoting our college job boards, it's Front Range and University of Colorado. We are in three newspapers, Mountain Year, The Daily Camera, and The Enterprise. We have flyers and banners posted at schools, and then we continue to push out communications through our typical communication channels. We've been holding virtual job fairs. We're working closely with Boulder, Broomfield, and Weld County workforce. We have a transportation-specific event coming up on May 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for anyone that may be interested. That will be held at Angibine Middle School. And then we continue to recruit at community events, which have been challenging during a pandemic, but we expect that to be opening back up and be back out there. So attracting talent, and this is really for anybody watching and anybody who wants to be a bus driver. So fully paid medical and dental benefits for the employee. We've got voluntary vision coverage, parapension, retirement, paid leave, I think that's 10 paid holidays, and sick leave. We've got life insurance, Ecopass, voluntary savings plans. Wages for bus drivers start out at $19.35 an hour. We are offering a $250 bonus for anyone that refers an employee and then anybody that has been with us for 90 days. As a new employee, will also get the $250 bonus. We pay for training and professional development, and we pay all the way through the CDL processes they're working through training, getting their CDL, et cetera. We continue to work with the Latino Chamber of Commerce. We're recruiting through diversity jobs and a few of us local Spanish radio stations. Lauren Lowe, if you have not met her, Lauren is our Spanish-speaking recruitment manager in human resources, an absolutely amazing and phenomenal individual who has put in a lot of time and effort in trying to fill a lot of our positions in operations, but putting a significant amount of resources into this work. Recruitment materials are published in both English and Spanish, as you can see to the right. And then we continue to get support with online, or we continue to give support with online applications for anyone that may need it. Right now, our biggest challenge is the CDL testing is only offered in English. So we are right now exploring options to provide testing in Spanish, knowing that our limitation is the tests will be administered in English. I've asked our team to reach out to CDE and Colorado Department of Transportation to see if that can get waived, and that's still work to be done on that side. What I'm proposing tonight and looking forward to is we're going to be putting together a community working group. We anticipate our first meeting being held the week of May 17th, looking for eight to 10 parent volunteers, and then we will ask for volunteers from our schools to help us brainstorm ideas if we do not get enough drivers hired. So this is really to start thinking about how would we prioritize our resources that are available to us in the fall, again, if we don't have the 225 drivers hired. And then thinking about how do we better utilize the resources that we have in this district? So we've got RTD, we have FlexRides, we have partners such as Hop Skip &amp; Drive, ALC, other contractors that we can utilize. So just to brainstorm those ideas and then bring back a plan to the district on what we would do if we are not fully staffed by August. What if we don't have enough drivers? Again, this is just utilizing our partners. We've got a fantastic relationship with RTD, but I have heard recently that they're facing a driver shortage much more significant than we are. So, you know, the idea that they're going to be able to bring back routes in Boulder Valley to transport for those schools that have good RTD access is going to be challenging for them, just as it is for us. We're looking at contracting with transportation contractors to cover special education and some of our lower ridership routes, so that will be discussed in the working group. And then reduction in service. And these are just some ideas. I don't want to show these as the limiting factors because this could be significant, but these are just some high-level ideas that we're looking at. Starting to right-size our routes, this is really around the registration process. Last year, we started that. However, last year, we really allowed that to stay open during the pandemic. This year, we're going to have to consider cutting off registration for only those students that might enroll later in the school district. We really need to understand who needs transportation, build our routes, and hopefully that will reduce some of our routes to be in alignment with the number of drivers that we have. Starting to think about modifying middle school and high school athletic trips to allow drivers to service both school routes and athletic trips. So one of the things we've always got into before is high school students, if they leave too early, they lose a significant amount of instructional time. If they leave too late, games start too late, they get back late, et cetera. So we've got a challenge there that we will be facing. Contracting with charter services for high school athletics. One of the challenges there, it's three to five times the cost of a normal bus route. The other challenge is the number of districts are doing the same thing because they're facing a driver shortage. So charter companies are full, so if we don't get out in front and get them scheduled, we don't get in line for them. And then reduce transportation services to high schools that are serviced by RTD. This is only if RTD has serviced those high schools. So when we think about Boulder High, Fairview, Centaurus, Repo Ridge, they all have pretty good service for RTD. Schools like Broomfield and Monarch do not. So that is not an option for those schools. So again, a call for action. So Tina, thank you for laying the groundwork for me. This is really, if you're interested, we are asking you to apply. Again, we are attempting to fill 50 to 60 positions by the fall in order to keep our current services as they are. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions? It's a great thorough presentation. Kathy?
I just wanted to say thanks, I guess. And I hadn't really linked all of the different issues together, Rob, so that was really helpful to link. Charters need bus drivers, charter buses, RTD needs bus drivers. And so all the things we like, oh, we can just rely on that, isn't going to help. And I just want to remind people that we're required to bus special education students, so there are a lot of things that you're dealing with. So thank you for keeping us informed and whatever we can do to be helpful besides putting it on our cars and things, I guess, let us know.
Yeah, and just a reminder, we're not required to transport anyone else, which is sort of, sometimes parents forget that, that that's not a requirement in the state of Colorado. So anyway, this is great. Yeah.
I want to thank you for what you are doing to try to help with the language barrier for the CDL test, because something I had thought of when I first looked at this slide deck was, is it possible, if the state doesn't change it, for, to get the test translated into the language of the test taker and they could take it with them to the English test? Is that allowed?
What I'm hearing right now from the Colorado Department of Education is that all of our road signs and everything else are in English. So that is our challenge, is that someone has to be fluent enough to be able to speak English, to understand signage, et cetera. So we've got, we've got a big hurdle to get over to get this passed. But right now, we don't have any influence that this test is only offered in English. It's going to require us to go a little bit higher to see if we can get that happening. So those discussions are happening, but I don't foresee it happening in the near future.
Anything else?
Rob, I want to thank you for the dire news. But I'm glad that you got Community Working Group starting up. And I would really like to encourage you to maybe seek out some time with a number of the Latino-serving organizations like Centro Amistad, El Paso, El Comité. All of those particular people have a lot of networks that they could probably help you. And most of these particular individuals that may be interested in taking some of these jobs, because they're good-paying jobs, good benefits, you could probably get a few folks from doing that effort. So if you need some help, let me know.
I will take you up on that, Richard, so thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and hopefully we get some good news. All right, our last information item is the legislative update. Any comments, anyone on legislation?
I'll be fast. There's a bill, I think, that's dropped to change the standard of review for charter schools, which I think we were pushing last year, and then the pandemic hit, so we weren't able to go forward with it. It's being sponsored by Jen Bacon, who is serving a dual role of being on the Denver School Board and being a state legislator. And she's receiving significant pushback from the charter school lobbyists. So we've already taken a position as a board to support that, and I just hope we can pay attention to that bill, because I think it's a really important bill as far as maintaining our own ability to decide which schools, especially when we're looking at declining enrollment and budgets, are coming into our district. There's also the audit bill, which Tina referenced earlier, that we'll continue to monitor. And then there's the collective bargaining bill, which I think has some serious issues, and I'm sure our very able legal counsel has been on top of that. One of the more concerning pieces of it is the forced mandatory arbitration that I think runs into some significant issues around local control. And so we'll see what happens with that bill. I see our HR director agreeing with me. I don't know what's going to happen with that bill. We, I think, have a great relationship with our union, but I understand some of the impetus behind the bill, but I think there's some real problematic issues with it. So those are the three I just wanted to bring up really quickly.
Yeah, and one thing I think that's interesting about the collective bargaining is that it applies to charter schools as well. Is that correct? So it's any publicly funded thing, which is, I haven't quite gotten my head around that.
Right. I'm hoping that there'll be significant changes before we have to take any position on it.
And the other piece, as Kathy mentioned, we're supporting HB 11295, which is the one on the charter schools. And that's because we voted in our legislative platform, which specifically calls out support for discretion or non-discretionary standard of appeal. And it's just a rewording of that. So that's already covered in our legislative platform, and that's why we have the legislative platform. And just another legislative note, I was on a CASB call last week, and we were talking about resolutions. And some of you know I don't care for resolutions, except if it's an urgent situation. And one option we have is to, and what happens is, they just pile up in the board docs library, and no one ever looks at them. You know, we don't, when staff come on, we're like, hey, could you look at the resolutions? Just sort of search through. And so, you know, one thing we might want to think about as a board is, and for instance, I'm thinking about the resolution we passed on extending licensure opportunities for children who are undocumented in our school system. What we could do is, we could rescind that resolution and come up with a way of putting the language in our legislative platform. So it does two things. So, you know, it puts our commitment in the legislative platform, and then we can get rid of the resolution, which was in reaction to legislation, but then it becomes a permanent part. So we may want to consider doing that in our next round. I have a couple of other things that we have in resolution that we might want to do that. So if that's something you all want to think about, and then we can bring it up at another time.
Just a quick update, Senate Bill 21199 just come out of committee, and thanks for that resolution that we passed. And now it's heading towards appropriations.
You mentioned the CASB LRC Legislative Resolution Committee. Don Redfield and Blue Rising did a really wonderful presentation about potency of pot. And it's starting to get a little bit of traction, and I just want to say hats off to our board president for bringing that to us early, because I think it's a very serious issue. And we were one of the first districts to come on board to support that effort. And there was a story this morning on Colorado Public Radio about it, and I just think we need to stay vigilant on that, because I think it does pose a serious threat to some of our older teens. And then one last piece of legislation that was also sponsored by Jen Bacon, and that is, all this federal money coming in, I think it's incumbent on us, and I know our district takes it seriously, to figure out how we're going to use that money wisely and to not keep doing the same old thing. Some things we have to keep doing, but some things I think we have opportunities to be doing, thinking in new ways. And it charged CDE with providing technical assistance, but within existing budgets. So I think we're going to be on our own on this. But I look forward to the ideas, because we have an amazing team of how we can be thinking about things differently, and what we can do to be closing achievement and opportunity gaps.
Anything else? All right, if not, we can move on to our consent grouping. Okay, so 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 13th, 2021 Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, April 13th, 2021 Regular Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, April 20th, 2021 Special Meeting, 7.5 Approval of the Contract to Boulder Commercial Interiors for the Justice High School Furniture, Fixtures, and Equipment, 7.6 Closeout to the Construction Manager, General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Administration Warehouse Building, 7.7 Resolution 2115 Non-Renewal of Licensed Contracts, 7.8 Grant East Network 21st Century Learning Center's Colorado Department of Education 21. Are there any items board members would like to pull? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Okay. By Sacastacy. And Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Yes or no? Do you approve the motion?
I said yes.
Get part. Yes. Myers?
Yes.
Marquez?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then the next item is a policy study item. It turns out it wasn't ready, so I'd like to pull Revised Policy IKC. Do I need to make a motion? No, I'm just going to pull it, and we're going to do it next time, okay? It's not time-sensitive. All right, and now we have study items. This meeting just keeps on going. All right, first study item is proposed revisions to the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 academic calendars.
Board members, as Robyn pulls this up, as we spoke to you all in presenting on our work session Equal School Day, that there would just be some slight calendar revisions that would come to you for study and action, and that's what we're presenting. Should take maybe a minute.
Correct. So, good evening again, President Marquez, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. So I came before you last fall to share with you the draft academic calendars for, as President Marquez stated, 21, 22, and 22, 23 academic school years. So just as a reminder, the academic calendars are created in accordance with BVSD Board Policy IC and ICA. And subsequently, you approved the academic calendars for those two years. However, as we discussed last week at the board work session, during the process of getting extensive feedback from our community on the topic of the Equal School Day, we had substantial feedback from our community that let us know that there was a distinct preference for having professional development days, which had been slated to be on Wednesdays in the months of October and February, in the calendars that you had previously approved. And as I said, there were two professional development days that fell into this category, October and February. So we heard the feedback loudly and clearly from our community, and that's why I'm back in front of you this evening. So as a result, on the proposed revised calendars for 21, 22, and 22, 23, that will come before you for approval at the next board meeting, you will see the proposed revision in the movement of these professional development days in both October and February, on both calendars, 21, 22, and 22, 23, to fall on Mondays instead of Wednesdays. And that is the end of my very brief study item, and I am very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so the February is going from the 9th to the 7th? Is that it?
Yes, correct.
So no more four-day weekend, huh?
Well, October in 21, 22, it is going to Monday, October 18th. And 21, 22, so February of '22, from Wednesday to Monday the 7th. And then in the subsequent year, the October Professional Development Day goes to Monday, October 17th. And in February of 2023, goes from Wednesday to Monday, February 6th.
All right, any questions? No? All right, looks good. And I think our final item is the agenda setting. Kathy?
I just have a question. When will we, do we expect to have the new policy brought forward on the emergency basis on how we do agenda at the beginning of the meeting? At the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll pass it that meeting. We'll notice it and pass it. Donna?
Tina, just a quick, since doubt was cast on the validity of my motion due to open meetings law, which I kind of don't understand, since this is an open meeting, and Agenda Item 3.2 was about COVID-19 updates and responses. So in my thought process, Robert's rules does allow a motion. Therefore, I'm requesting an Agenda Item on the Action Item Agenda, that we discontinue the mandate of mask wearing for our students and allow this to be an option for parents to decide.
So are you making a motion, or you're asking for an Agenda Item?
Agenda Item.
Okay.
For those reasons.
Okay, so I will, thank you. All right. Any other thoughts or questions? Great. This meeting is adjourned.